Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the March 1st School Board of Mainz County Workshop. And excited to be here, excited, good, good topic today. We'll be discussing to how to help better the district. First, want to start with public comments. We do have one public comment, and that is Heather Felton. So come on down and take a seat right there in the middle, like you're at a congressional hearing. We're not going to pepper you.
I don't want to send somebody's stuff. Alright, this feels really odd. Alright, good morning, board, district people, everybody who's here. I want to thank you all for your hard work, and particularly the staff putting together everything to go over the mill. I've come to all the workshops and seen all the presentations, and I just want to remind the public and the board how important this is, this mill is. As a former parent and teacher in the district, this, the last couple years of this have been a huge help to the staff, not only in providing services for the kids, but providing more competitive pay for the teachers. We know that there is a teacher shortage. There continues to be a teacher shortage, and to be able to offer the teachers the incentive to come and stay here and teach our kids is really important. You will get dissenters, you will get phone calls. Please don't take every single one as the voice of the entire county, or your entire district. You will get dissenters. You know, they don't have kids in the schools, they're retired, or they're single, and they have no interest in what goes on in the school system at all. But please remind them that these young people that we're educating are our future workers here. They're the people that are going to provide them with their services as they continue to age and live here in the county, and we want them to be smart, we want them to be kind, we want them to be able to function well in society, and we need to do everything we can to help them do that. So when you get those calls, please remind them of that, that this is for the betterment of our entire county, our entire community, not just those kids at whatever school. Alright, that is the important thing. Everything we do in the school system is for those kids. Helping our teachers, helping our staff, all of that helps our kids. And if we aren't focused on that, then what are we doing? That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so that concludes public comments. So let's jump into our one and only item of the day, which is board discussion regarding the continuation of the additional millage for operational purposes. So yesterday morning, I believe it was, sent out a draft resolution of my own, that in the help of Mr. Dai and others. I wanted to be able to present, discuss some things from it, and then we all discuss everything, whatever you want to do at that point. My draft that I have created, and my thoughts that I have put down, and we'll discuss here in a second, come from the entire time I've been on the board, came from discussions with Superintendent Saunders. When Dr. Weisong was brought in, the same discussions were had. I didn't want to particularly look into any changes, or any thoughts of changes, knowing that the person that's going to have to do the actual changes, and be the part of the front face of the changes is not for it. So I wanted to make sure that there was some clarity with that as I presented this. So if y'all would just give me a minute to, I know you've seen it, just explain a little bit about my thoughts, and where I'm coming from with some of the changes to the resolution that I believe would allow the district to have some flexibility, but also guaranteeing our teachers, and guaranteeing our taxpayers, and our parents, faculty, etc., that we're going to be a competitive district, to do everything we possibly can to get the best education we can to our kids. So if you will just follow me to, I'm gonna skip page one, I'll come back to it in a second. I want to go straight to the page two, which is the actual ballot language, there in the middle in bold. Much the same, some of the language, there's some additions that I want to talk about and discuss, why I thought this is potentially a good idea, and then I'll go back to page one here in a second. So obviously, the first page, or the first sentence you see, which is the first change, is the language "up to one mil." As I said earlier, I think flexibility is, you'll hear me probably say that a bunch. I think flexibility is important for us as a district, to be able to spend and use the, if we're good enough to have the voters pass this again, to be able to make sure that the "up to" language was to make sure that the public knows that we are good stewards, we only spend what we need to spend, and every budget process every year, as the staff is doing their budget process, now we've started that a little bit, haven't seen the staffing and all that, that'll come. But as we go through that process, the staff will be able to tell us, what do we think we need to actually levy to be able to create our budget and make it successful. Maybe it is one every time, maybe it's not, but it allows that flexibility in there, to be able to lower it if we felt like we didn't need the full one mil. So that's my thinking with the "up to." Moving down from there, obviously, the dates, school security and safety, I know we had a brief talk, that is something to me that was important to add, that wasn't on the last one. Recruit retained teachers, staff, of course, that was on there. Workforce training for students, I believe that talking to community members over and over again, I think workforce is something, and businesses especially, we know we're trying to create a launch center, and do some apprenticeships, and pre-apprenticeships, and workforce readiness education is something that I do believe that we need to tackle as much as possible. So that's why that language is in there. Additional instructional supports for pre-kindergarten and early literacy programs, I put that in there after our strategic planning, to be honest with you, the, all five of us said this is an important item for us. We all felt like we just had a presentation Tuesday from Dr. Halpin. We all agree that early learning literacy, that the numbers show, you can't deny the data. So you know, my question to her, and we asked, you asked some of the questions about having more classes and things like that, is, you know, how do we do that? And we're going to have to be able to, in my opinion, have the flexibility to use some millage money to help that early learning literacy. STEM has always been in there, visual performing arts was there, excuse me, I skipped over professional development, STEM, visual performing arts, athletics, and public charter schools. Adding in athletics, I'll give you a number for athletics, the reason why I believe it should be added in, just like I believe arts and performing arts should have been added in before as well. The past year, not this year right now currently in, but last year, close to $5 million was spent on athletics in the high schools. That was their payout from the schools total. The district gave a total of $175,000 to those seven high schools combined. So where do the other millions come from, right? Well, they come from internal accounts at the schools, they come from boosters, they come from ticket sales at games, typically football games. And I believe that with athletics, the basic fundamental of athletics, transportation, some of the vital equipment, if you don't have a soccer ball, you can't play soccer, paying officials, that is something that I believe as a district, we should be helping with, and not relying on the schools to fund. We don't rely on the schools to fund their, the performing arts aspect, and I don't believe we should. We should be absolutely helping from the district, and this is a way I think we can. So that brings us from, and then the rest of it, with an oversight of an independent citizen committee or audit to ensure proper use of funds, that language was in there in the original, so, or somewhat in there. So that's the premise, that's some of the changes, some of the additions of where funding will go, and I want to flip back to the first page, because I do believe it's important to, and some of this that I'll discuss, as I discuss, what I believe should be changed in some of the percentages and things like that, it's all about a flexibility. I believe, and if you look at, I'm gonna skip down, because the first several whereas's are kind of the same. If you skip down to the second to last whereas, funds from the additional ad valorem millage will be placed into the general fund, and subs-
Subsequently.
Subsequently, thank you, used as authorized by the school board for the purposes described in the referendum. So that's a different change. I do believe that, again, putting in the general fund allows the flexibility for us to be able to spend the money based on what the ballot language says. And when I say "we," I'm talking about the superintendent creating his budget, and us approving it, and having the priorities. But I think the most important part was making sure we protect our teachers. If we're not going to have percentages, how do we protect our staff and our teachers from the normal retention supplement they've been receiving? And that's that last sentence in there, is that the millage retention amount will be set at the year of 24-25. So that's not this salary, that's not this year, it's next year. So next year, whatever we possibly have, which is as of right now, the current resolution is 51%, so 51% of what will be brought in will be the baseline moving forward in 26-27, or excuse me, 25-26. And then, as adjusted annually by the school board, as we do our negotiations and etc., to keep salaries competitive. I want verbiage, and I wanted verbiage inside the resolution that said, we are not, this is not about when we, if we changed the percentages, this is not about affecting teachers in a negative way. I do not want them, I want them guaranteed baseline. But if we look at the percentages, again, and we, to be able to get rid of them, meaning, if you look at some of the, I made sure we had this printed out, and when I talk about percentages, just so we're all on the same page, if you turn to page 17 of the budget workshop, and we've seen this, and everybody's seen this before, but those percentages, 51% to the instructional staff, the 6% to ASME, you know, obviously charter gets theirs, the STEM, etc., and I don't know if today is the right day to set those percentages, but there's, we're obviously going to divide this money up into the programming, we believe. And so, to me, having the percentages just locks us in to potentially, good and bad, and I'll give you a great example of bad. What if, what if the total is not 69 million, what if it was 60 million, and we had to only give 51% to the staff, then they're less than what they're getting now. So I believe that, just for flexibility, to have it every year, keep them competitive. Look, we know other counties, we're getting teachers from other counties, they're chasing our number, and I've said this many times in this diet, so I want to be the best at everything. I want to be the best paid, I want to be the best in arts, I want to be the best in athletics, in education, and so we want to stay competitive, but allows us the flexibility if we don't have those percentages locked in, year to year, from one year to half the last four years. Maybe they do stay the same throughout the four years, but at least this allows the flexibility of staff and board to maneuver if we want to. Great example is, we know we need to get bus drivers up. Got a county down south that's paying more, right? So we're losing bus drivers. And so maybe that's where we take some flexibility to say, 6% is not enough to ASME, maybe it's X amount percent, right? Throw a number in there. I don't know if that's, today, I don't believe today's the discussion to start talking about percentages, because we're still a year and a half away from that. But I do believe today's the discussion on, in the resolution language, do we want to provide? Because if our thought is to potentially maybe not have those percentages, I want a guarantee in the resolution for the teachers. And that's what I believe this, the language it's in here allows. So that's my thought process behind this draft, and it's up to us five here now to come to consensus, and move forward, and say, hey, this is out, this is in, whatever, or go back to the old, and look at the old. So that's why we provided that as well. So with that, we don't have grandiquers open, but the floor, the floor is, anyone who wants to react first?
May I ask a question?
Absolutely, ask a question, definitely.
What was your thinking on the professional development?
On-
Putting that in the ballot language.
Well, I believe that with adding the executive director we did with Ms. Johnson, and really focusing on creating our pipeline of teachers, assistant principals, to become leadership positions later on, we've got to do, have some kind of funding, I believe, to say, let's have a better and robust professional development. And that's something that I'm not going to choose to professional, I'm not, sort of, I'm not able to do that. That's absolutely something the superintendent would work with, and if you would like to, and talk about, a little bit about what your thoughts were about the professional development side.
Thank you, Chairman. So a couple of pieces, thinking about, again, the strategic plan workshop that the board held, I believe, three weeks ago now. There's consensus around early learning and literacy as a top priority, and there is always more training to do, particularly at K through 3, with explicit phonics instruction, and some of those tools. And so I think particularly keeping in mind that because ESER funds end, and so a lot of things that were being funded in that bucket now shifts back into the general fund. I think the additional flexibility related to professional development would be helpful as we, you know, again, it's broadly worded, which I think gives us options.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a question.
I have a question. Is there a reason why your language does not talk about student achievement at all, or the additional instructional time that they have gotten for the last five or six years?
My thought was never to change the time. So that may have been a typo, I'm looking at, that may be a typo, take that out. I would, that was not my intent to take that out, the 30 minutes.
Or student achievement?
So the student achievement, of course, a lot of this is, so, as you know, student achievement comes from many aspects of, not just about the funding aspect, right? And so, to me, I don't want, there are factors in our, in our grades in our school, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And just because we slipped from an A to a B district, or something like that, I wouldn't want ever, anyone ever to think that we don't need this funding, because our students didn't achieve from a B to an A, right? Doesn't mean I'm not opposed to putting it, that language back in there.
What if in that same year, since the language would now say "up to," the board had taken it down to .98 of a mil? And then they said, oh wow, we did go down, maybe we do need that additional funding. Do you believe the board the following year would actually go back up to one mil, if the district determined it was needed, and the board saw that it actually did make a negative impact?
Let me make sure I'm getting you right.
Yeah, totally hypothetical.
Student achievement went down.
Sure.
That, that you're saying, right?
Yes, my hypothetical, my hypothetical is, this went through with the words "up to one mil," okay? And in that year, the board had decided, .98, we're going to play a political game, and say .98, and we're going to say, we lowered your taxes, everybody, even though everyone's been paying the full one mil for the last however many years without a problem, but whatever. So we played that game, that political game, to do that, and then student achievement goes down. Do you believe that the board the following year would say, we recognize that that was a mistake, that we do need additional funding for X, Y, and Z, and raise it back up to one mil?
I think if we could absolutely correlate the, whatever we lost in that funding from the .02, to show that absolutely affected.
Do you believe-
I believe I would.
Board would-
I can't say a board as a whole, because I don't know what that board looks like, but I think I would, personally.
See, the thing is, this will go past all of us sitting here.
Hundred percent. It'll go back-
So it's not just who's sitting here today, but who will be sitting in the future, and what political games are going to play, based on the verbiage in this-
Potentially.
-resolution in front of us today. Whereas, the 30 minutes isn't in here right now, and without the percentages set in there, which will be determined per year, which will also be the one mil determined per year, what I believe will happen is, a political, this is no longer making it about kids, right? There's no student achievement mentioned here. The only word "student" is only for workforce training, it's actually not about kids in this resolution. This is now politics. This isn't kids. This isn't about our kids at all. This isn't about, I don't see it, honestly. I feel like this is a political game now. And what this is going to do is force the board to play a political game every year, versus what is really best for this district, versus what's really best for kids. Because, look, I talked through this language twice now. The first time it went on the ballot, the second time it went on the ballot, Mrs. Foreman is the only one, I think, because I don't think you were here yet, when we did it the second time when it went on the ballot. So Mrs. Foreman-
I was here for about three months.
Okay. Mrs. Foreman understands some of the conversation we had, but even before that, the first time, we had discussions about the uses of the words "up to one mil." And at those times, it was decided to stay consistent, for the taxpayers' purpose, so that they know, so that we are clear, so that we are transparent. Because you even said in your explanation, it could be the one mil every year. Well, gosh, shouldn't we be clear with them? That's what it is? Instead of playing a political game of, well, guess what, guys, it's .99 this year, and we lowered your taxes, and then the politicians sitting up here can run around saying that, versus what's doing what's right for kids.
You could argue.
We have such a long laundry list that we have just added to this. We know that the state, even though they have increased, they are not outpacing our costs, and they know that, they don't care. And we've seen it happen for years and years and years. There is not a world, in any time in the next four years, because this is only four years, where there will not be desperate need in all of these areas, that will surpass what we are even asking for. There's just not. I understand that there will be people that will put pressure, as what was said, that is true. Gosh, I've lived it for years. But the vast majority of people recognize the value in investing in public education. And if you use the words "up to," you aren't making it about the kids anymore, you are making it about politics. It's disingenuous, I actually feel like it's unfair to taxpayers, because then they don't know what the board's going to do every single year. You're going to go down one year, you really think they're going to go up? They're never going to go up. And if they did go up, then you'd have a ruckus from all the taxpayers. Then you'd have an insurmountable amount of pressure on this board, they would never do it, and if they did, it would be a huge, I don't have a better word, ruckus. I guess it's an old person word, I think, but I'm saying it. It's, it's a, I personally believe it's a mistake. That, those, that word, "up to," those two words, is a mistake. I think it is wrong, I think it is disingenuous, I think it'll make it political, and this shouldn't be political. This is about our school district, it's about making it as best as we can. Every single person has made it clear, that's their commitment, is to do what's right for kids. If that's your commitment, then those words don't belong in this referendum. I just don't agree with it.
I don't, can we dialogue, can I respond?
Yeah.
So I do think, I do think, my initial thoughts about the 30-day, like, that's not, that needs to be back in there.
The 30 minutes.
The 30 minutes, yeah, 30-day. That'd be nice, huh?
[laughing]
School starts schooling? So no, I agree with you, that needs to be back in there. That's, that's not a question. That's a huge part of the, that is a huge part of achievement, and some of this achievement we've seen is kids getting an extra 30 minutes. I do agree with that, 100%. The "up to," absolutely valid, I struggle with it, absolutely valid points. I 100% agree with having the consistency. absolutely valid, I struggle with it, absolutely valid points. I, I hundred percent agree with having the consistency. For the taxpayer to see and know it's, it's going to be one, right? Um, based on whatever their value of their, their home is, which doesn't say consistent, but you know, um, at least they know. I don't necessarily see us changing a whole lot from one, from a staff perspective. But I do believe that sometimes enough, it could be enough, right? And, a- and again, hey, this, and I, this is me, this is only mine, this isn't, this is only me doing this. But into your question, I do believe that I would have the fortitude to raise it up and down. Because I'll tell you right now, I don't know if we're going to raise it down. I don't even, I don't know. But again, it gives us a flexibility. But I see the arguments. Th- this is, this isn't the first time I brought this up to anybody and they've been against it. Absolutely. I see the argument. And I do see the argument of being consistent. I see the argument of, um, and I can even go with some of these. Again, I'm a little, I just, I see the argument of, of the consistency for the, the, the staff, um, that we know it's going to be one, that I see all that. I do.
It's not ten years. It's not fifteen years. It's only four. Do you know what I mean?
Agreed, agreed.
I feel like everyone deserves consistency for just four years, especially since we don't get any kind of consistency from the state.
Sure.
This is the only kind of consistency the district has. And you will leave this up to a political whim if you leave those words in. And that's not fair to anyone. You might, you might say, well, if the district came to me and said, we need the full one mil, I'll do it. But I know plenty of people that have sat here or will sit here, that would say, too bad, you're getting point nine six. I have to tell my people that. I'm getting too much pressure from my one group that I meet with on a whatever night, there they say, whatever. Like, there's, you know that happens. That's a fact. So they're going to get pressure on, not realizing that's not the majority of the community. The majority of the community has already spoken twice that they support this. With the words one mil. I just, I feel like this is so disingenuous. Um, aside from that, the language, citizen committee or auditor, I really think we need to pick one or the other.
Okay, that's why I left.
Okay, I think we can't have it like that. It'll look terrible.
Discussion, uh, multiple times throughout the years that I've been here, at least two or three times, about TFOC auditor, you know, I know there's been a discussion on that. That's why I left it. Or, I mean, that's something for us to decide as part of this.
I'm also curious about additional instructional supports for pre-kindergarten, early literacy programs. That's all, that's all long, like, there's, we only get so many words in this ballot language. And that is, and that, yes. And that is a large chunk of it. And I'm trying to envision, like, first of all, I love the professional development. I'm totally fine with that. I think workforce training is a weird wording also, but that's a different issue because I think we could word that way better than what that is because that's weird. But the instructional supports for pre-kindergarten and early literacy programs, what does that look like? What does that mean? Because, because we know that additional classrooms requires additional actual physical classrooms. So that, that can't be what this is for. We can't, we can't build more classrooms with this money because that's a capital expense. And we know that's what's needed in order to increase pre-K classrooms. So what's the vision, I mean, like, early literacy, okay, I get that. I don't understand the rest of it.
That includes pre-K.
Right, but then why don't we just say early literacy?
Yeah, we can shorten it down to, if you, if we believe that the average person is going to know what that means, I guess. That's why pre-kindergarten, I guess maybe, maybe they don't want to know that, I mean, that, that's my only concern.
What if it was just?
And Dr. Weisler, if you want to just jump in on, just to talk about some of the ways we could potentially use for early learning and
What if it was just instructional supports for early, instructional supports for early literacy programs?
Like early, early reading. People understand that.
Or just reading.
Go ahead, Dr. Weisler.
I, I was going to say, Mr. Chapman and I were listening to the discussion and, um, wordsmithing over here. So Mr. Chapman has a suggestion that maybe will help.
Uh, a sentence could read additional instructional supports and time for early literacy slash student achievement. Cross out pre, pre-kindergarten and in programs.
The only reason I don't think that would work is right now, the extra thirty minutes is integrated into every subject area in middle school and high school.
And I don't want to, I guess I am speaking. But I, I, my, the, the extra thirty minutes isn't going away. That's in the supplement. No matter what, it's in the supplement.
Yeah, but it's not in our, it's not, it's not even in this resolution anywhere. Like, it's not anywhere in here at all.
I can keep, I'll keep, I'll keep, if, and
Not where as clause, it's like literally nowhere.
So, so if, and so that's
Thirty minutes doesn't need to be in the ballot language.
No, but it needs to be.
Correct.
It's not in the resolution, though.
I said needs to be.
Yeah, it's, it's not there.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll start wordsmith, smithing whoever that is, the whereas, but the idea was additional, additional instructional supports and time, with, with that and time. That's coming from the old ballot language, but I'll leave it up to, to you and the board to see if that satisfies perhaps you and the board's colloquy here.
I think part of my
Legal, how's your hand up?
One thing to be mindful of is we're limited to seventy-five words.
Right.
Right.
The language we have right now, that's in the draft resolution, is exactly
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five words.
That's what I think you're saying. If we reduce some, I mean, it takes, it's taking up
Too much.
Yeah.
Um.
I'm okay with reducing, whatever y'all think.
It'll get reduced once we pick citizen committee or auditor. Um, the other one that says workforce training, why can't we use like career and technical education? I just feel like workforce training is not as formal as career and technical education. And that's been in the ballot language the last two times.
True, true. Um, I, again, I would, I'm okay with the language that, that being that, but I think that does the average person know what that is? Workforce, they know what a workforce is.
They voted for it twice.
I understand that. And that's, so that's a great argument, sure. I don't think we've seen the, I, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not a stickler on that at all, whatever. I mean, yeah, we can tweak that. All of that verbiage like that, we can tweak.
But you are going to be a stickler on the word athletics.
Yes.
See, my problem, here's my concern. My next concern is, okay, I'm going to start off by saying, I thought the whole purpose of our meeting today was for the board to really discuss everything. I was really looking forward to hearing everyone's opinion about the idea of the millage and their values before we ever got to this point.
Okay.
That is what my understanding of today was going to be.
Okay.
I did not think we were going to walk in with some pre-made thing because instead of, here's your football. Instead of me being on offense, where I can talk about, hey, these are the things I believe in and support, I am now on defense. Because here's what's in front of me and I have to either say yes or no and argue my points.
You don't have to say that already.
I don't want to be that. I don't want this to be that because this is a joyful thing that the community has given year after year after year, and I don't want it to be anything other than that. And what this does is puts at least me from offense and talking about what I value, what I believe we should do, what the district says we need, to now defense. And that's how I feel right now.
And I didn't mean to make it be offense, defense. I, I understand your analogy. I didn't mean it to make it
Of course you do. It's football.
Well, it's all sports, I mean.
All sports, all right. I don't know sports.
Maybe not golf.
Okay. I don't, I don't know what defense on golf looks like.
All offense. Um, no, I completely, and I understand what your thought process is. Um, and I didn't make this up with no input from district. I mean, but, and we can absolutely say, I don't want to talk about this at all. You know, you have the right to absolutely say that and say, I believe X, Y, Z, or we should keep it the same, or we should do whatever. Absol- I'm not saying you can't.
Yeah, but I can't, I can't actually do that because what you did when you made this was actually create an anchoring bias that will be very difficult to move away from.
From my own perspective or just?
No, you have created an anchoring bias, an anchoring bias onto this when it got sent. It's going to be difficult to move away from this now. That is why I feel like I am now on defense. When I thought, I really was, I was genuinely looking forward to hearing from every single person
And we still can.
And hearing what they valued. No, it will be enframed in this now.
We, it doesn't hap- this is what I valued.
Yes, I know. I, I'm surprised athletics was that far down the list. Um, okay, I'm sorry, that was not nice.
Oh, good.
I apologize.
I'm, I'll sleep fine tonight. I don't, and I'll be, I mean, it's fine, it's all good.
I have a concern about athletics being on here for one single reason. I understand your point and I think it's a valid point that they do get some funding, but not a lot of funding from the district. I actually think that's a really valid point. However, if there are no percentages tied to this and it will be determined year by year, I have a concern that athletics will get short, or that athletics will overtake some of the other needs. Arts has not had a long time with the millage funds. And they have a lot of things that they still haven't gotten done, that they were hoping to get done, that I don't feel like it's even fair to try and divvy it up more into other programs because I don't think they've had time yet. That STEM has had years of time, you know, they've had five years, because it went into effect in twenty eighteen. They've had five years to, to re- get this, but arts has really only had like two. And there's a lot of things that, like, they wanted to increase that they have not had the chance to do. And the arts have shown that they make an academic difference. That it, it actually makes a graduation difference and an academic difference. And that's why I can get behind that. I mean, I love art personally, but it shows, there's been, has been shown that it makes an academic graduation difference. I don't know if that's true about athletics. It would be interesting to know that data. Maybe it does. Maybe it does make those differences and then I feel like then I could get behind that. But until I know that, I'd have a hard time getting behind that being in here. Because it's not a set percentage. It'll be set every year. I'm afraid it will cannibalize some of the other things in here that I think I personally believe are far more important than athletics because I know they truly make an academic difference to our students. So I think I've taken up enough time. I really, really, really want to hear what everyone else thinks, not necessarily about this, but about the millage in total.
Agreed. The, the conversation of what, when you, when it's your time, does not have to be based on this. It can be based on your own thoughts that you had. Absolutely. I'm sure there's other people with completely different thoughts, which is absolutely fine. These are just mine. Are you good?
For the moment.
Okay. Yep, go ahead.
That's a lot to unpack. The whole thing is a, a lot to unpack. First of all, um, I'm going to reference the CFOC's annual reports throughout my conversations. Uh, talking about, uh, graduation. And I hate to be the Debbie Downer, but from twenty sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, all the way through to twenty twenty-two, the graduation rate has declined. In their annual report, we went from eighty-three point five percent in sixteen, seventeen to eighty point three percent twenty-one, twenty-two. And then on their annual report, they also say on page six of their report, no conclusion can be drawn about the impact of resolution revenue on retention. Information related to the expansion of career and technical education in STEM programs supported by the resolution revenue is being measured, including the number of programs added, as well as student participation in those programs. And then on page ten of their report, it shows, um, the number of teachers that have been, uh, with us, teachers population with advanced degrees. From twenty eighteen, we had total teachers, three thousand thirty-nine to twenty twenty-two for April twenty twenty-two to two thousand eight hundred and eighty. Not enough information is given to determine if this is due to recruitment or more competitive candidate or if the teachers already employed within a district completed advanced degree certificates during this time. And then again, on page eleven, conclusions. Uh, we must work together to establish a more streamlined recurring flow of information. This is particularly true for relevant outcomes for teachers and staff recruitment and retention. So that's my spiel on that. Uh, Ms. Messenger pointed out arts versus athletics. I know in athletics, you have to have a certain grade point average to participate. I'm not sure about arts, if that's the same. But in athletics, it's a driver for them to do better in their academics to participate in, uh, football or any other, uh, sport. And in the resolution, you're seeing, um, for, and I agree, it should say career and technical instead of workforce training for students. And then you said the committee or auditor. To me, I think the CFOC should have more support for auditing the information and they don't, they have not gotten that. The most they have gotten is this past year. And I have my CFOC book with me. I could go through there and show you examples of materials that they've provided once they had asked for several reports. And then they did get a report on some of the, uh, STEM millage programs that expanded or enhanced. And through that report, I can see STEM general. Does, uh, uh, we all refer to accol- accolades. And there's a cost in here for two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. And it's Title I discretionary enhance. I don't know if that's an enhancement or is it, is it the whole program? Because we never got a real definitive answer on how much accolades cost the district as a whole. And, and there are other line items in here that I'm not going to go through every one of them. But there was a presentation given to the CFOC committee uh, on the arts millage. And some of those are, in my opinion, was questionable. The CFOC questioned that. Transportation dispersment was a hundred and seventy-five thousand eight forty-four. Uh, the spreadsheet that, uh, was given to the CFOC committee through that presentation didn't balance to what the actual number was from the district. So I'm going to go back to the resolution again.
Can you say that one more time, what you just said?
Uh, what I said was that information that was given to the CFOC committee on a spreadsheet. The numbers didn't match to what the district had. So I don't know where this
Oh, the outside, that, that
Right, right. The spreadsheet was created for the, for the CFOC on the arts millage. And then when they got the information from another source, the numbers didn't jive. I don't know if there was a, uh, some numbers were just missing or what. As far as up to one mil, we, this, this millage started out in twenty eighteen and was projected to get thirty-five, thirty-six million. They ended up with closer to thirty-seven, thirty-nine million. And as the years progressed, it got bigger, bigger and bigger. The last year, we, it got up to sixty-eight million. The last year, we, it got up to sixty-eight million. My whole thought about with the end of the ESER and the millage coming back up for renewal, that we're now going to flip losing ESER, so we have to do the mill. I'm not saying I, I support having a referendum. What I don't support is continually using that bucket for funding activities that I, or, or, or other sources. You can look at the reports, and there were items bought through the referendum that the CFOP felt should have been capital. We're talking about high-dollar equipment that was attached to auditoriums for arts, um, that I felt probably should have been a capital expense. Um, so there's a lot of things that goes on with that, that money that I feel, like, again, acolitics, burner-holt training, seventeen thousand. Those are all good programs. I, I support that totally. But I, I just can't sit here in good conscience and say, "I want this to be a whole mill, period, stop, no debate." I don't thi- I think that the, it's a four-year tax levy, it's a four-year levy, and the growth that we are experiencing versus what we had in eighteen. I mean, you just can't even compare the money that we have been raising through this millage and how we have, in my opinion, used it to, uh, almost like the ESER to me. We've used it for other things that not necessarily, uh, I felt was in line with what the taxpayers thought it should be. Um, I am in, I'm having a hard time even doing a point five. Point five is where I was gonna land on, land on hard because of the increase in taxpayer dollars that we've gotten, the growth that we've had throughout the district. Uh, that was the one thing I would like to see. I have not seen. What are the numbers if we projected to be point five? What are the numbers if we projected to be a point seven-five? What is the number if we projected at a point one? So seeing this up two has not given me anything more but just questions. I don't know what it would be if it were projected to be those no- dollar amounts. So has there been a study done on what the projections would be at all? I guess I'm asking finance and-
Uh, Dr. Wyss, have you guys, I don't know if you, from the tax collector, have you seen anything where what their projection for the next year? I don't know that answer.
Not yet. Those have not come out yet. We're expecting those to be soon. But I think one of the pre, um, conference reports at least had property taxes going up, maybe another four, five billion. It wasn't as large as the, the projection that I saw.
Yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't gonna be-
It said that seventy-two billion or whatever it is, it's gonna be like seventy-six or something.
I don't know, on page six of our little document here.
Is that the future?
I don't know. It says twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
No, that, that was this past, the seventy-two billion was-
Right, that was last year, right.
And he's asking, like, is it-
And I-
For twenty twenty-four, twenty-five.
The property appraisers, you know, they, this is, yeah. Um, and that's at a ninety-six percent collection rate, okay? Um. I just have a real hard time doing the one mill. Um. And that would be my question, you know, with this language. Before we even did this language, we haven't gotten any kind of projections of what the numbers would look like. And I know that's kind of hard to do, but how many schools are we building? You know, we're building the schools based on the growth. So we have to have some kind of knowledge of what our growth is gonna be, because we're building all of these schools. So the developers are building how many homes? Every one of those homes are gonna be subject to this mill.
Uh, Dr. Wyss hasn't thought about that, I think.
I, I, I just wanted to share, I, I, I think any kind of projection is challenging to work on because of all the different variables, right? And if, if we had, if we, if, if we rewound back to 2018, right? If this, if this group was here talking about where things were going to be, right? N- no one could have predicted where we're at today, right? Because you had a, you had an international pandemic, um, you had, um, a, a, a huge population, you know, growth here. Um, some of that property tax value is the sheer, right, turnover, right? In, in the real estate market. May- maybe that continues, maybe it doesn't. That, that, that's kind of crystal ball work. I think, you know, one, one of the keys to remember is that, um, our costs are up to run this school district. Uh, and so, for example, Vice Chair, you talk about, um, you talked about some of the transportation expenditures that are funded in the millage so that students can go to these really, um, uh, innovative STEM competitions and, and robotics and whatnot. Um, charter bus costs have increased dramatically in the last five years. And if you talk to any of our teachers or coaches, they're, they're, you know, they're, they're struggling with that. Um, and so we, we just have to know that, you know, the, um, the, the, the costs are just very, very different. And I think to Ms. Messenger's point earlier, um, the, you know, we, we, we get an annual budget from the legislature, right? There are changes every year, and it's very difficult for us to make long-range plans. Um, this is at least one multi-year kind of funding source, uh, that we have. The, and, and just the, the other piece is that really the significance of the ESER funding is not, "Okay, we need to, you know, move all this around." It was that for a period of time, you had a, a fairly large grant source that could help with emerging needs and cost increases and, 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 and things like that. And, 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 and when that goes away, we're even more dependent on whatever comes in from the legislature each year. And so it gets back to this question of, you know, the, the millage becomes that opportunity locally to say, "We want to provide some stability." What we do with that, right, what, what expenditures are allowed or not allowed? What guardrails the board wants to put in place, we'll, we'll deal with all of that as a staff. So if there are things you didn't like before, and, and if you all get to consensus on that, that's very easy for us to, to implement as a direction. Uh, but I think the, you know, I think the need is high. Uh, the other piece I'll mention, some of the, some of the data, um, you know, we, we, we just have to remember that so much has changed since this first millage was enacted in terms of even the state measures and how they're calculated. So when we talk about grad rate, Manatee was at eighty-three point two in eighteen nineteen. The twenty-two, twenty-three grad rate is eighty-two point three. So we're within a single percentage point. Um, but the standards have changed. The rules are not the same. Um, they changed in the, during, they changed during the pandemic years, and so most districts ended up with higher grad rates, because you had assessments canceled and waivers in place. Now we're back to the rules before, except now the Concordant scores are higher, which is why when we talked about grad rate earlier this year, we, we may see a little dip in the grad rate before it comes back up, because our, our teachers and our students and families are norming around a higher standard. Um, and yet we do multi-year comparisons that aren't exactly apples to apples. So I know it's complicated. It's a lot to unpack and, and a lot on your shoulders. I, I, I would just, um, I would just caution against really long-term comparisons when so many of the inputs have changed.
Well, okay. Is there, is there a statute asking legal that we have to just do this for four years? Can we do it for six or eight? I don't, I don't know what the limits are on that. Because Ms. Ms. Far- Ms. Uh, Messenger talked about it's for four years. It's, that's the stability to our taxpayers to know it's for four years. This is what they're gonna get for four years.
Statute is up to four years.
Up to, okay.
Less than four years.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, 'cause somebody asked me about that, and I'm like, "I'm not real sure once this comes up."
Or is the max?
Or is the max?
And it has to go to a referendum again.
Okay.
You might be thinking of the sales tax, which I think can be fifteen.
Fifteen, right. That's why some people ask me about that, and I'm like, "I'm almost sure referendum's only four, but I'm gonna make a point to ask about that."
Um, no, and we did do that as a legislative priority to get the four moved to, to get it changed so that we don't have to do this every four years, maybe every ten years.
They have not done that, right, right. Um, uh, but I am not, I would rather stick on a number instead of up to. And whether that, and I, my, I mean, in the middle for me, and the compromise for me is a point seven-five. Do a point seven-five for the, for the term of the referendum. And then there is no politicking. It's set in stone. And we're still gonna get, I believe, we're still gonna reach the goal of what and I'm sure they've, there's numbers been run to see, okay, if we do this, we do that. It may be this, it may be that. But I think point seven-five is where I would land and, and put that in print. And I would also say, um, I just wanna say this for the, uh, CFOP committee. It's been very frustrating for them to get reports after the fact, after the books are closed, and they look at items and they wonder, "Why is that in this category instead of that category? Why is the millage paying for that when it should be, uh, uh, in a different bucket per se?" So that's been very difficult to, to manage for that committee. I mean, how do you take it from one closed year? And once you see that annual report, and that's what they were told, "We can't give it to you till it's approved by the board." Then it's approved by the board, then they see all of these items that they question. Wait a minute, why is that two hundred thousand dollars for that? It should have been, or twenty thousand. I don't know the number. Why is that? That should be a capital purchase. Um, and well, we can't, the books are closed. That's, uh, basically the, might be the answer they're giving. I don't really know if that's the case, but I just would land on the point seven-five and do the four-year. And then I would also change some of this language in here to, uh, and, and to me, athletics is as important as people will sit up here and argue the arts. But I believe arts doesn't need as much as a STEM program. I believe arts has gotten what they need. As a matter of fact, some of the schools didn't spend all of their money. Because, uh, the way it was allocated, how it was messaged, I don't know. But to me, I think ath- athletics is, is, uh, if not, I think it's actually more important than arts, but I'm more of a tennis and athletic person than I am an arts person. So I would, that's where I'm at on this, is the point seven-five. And then change the language into, uh, the citizens', uh, oversight committee and a dedicated auditor, maybe to help assist them in getting, um, the information prior to the books closing, so they could, 'cause it's says in here, "They are an oversight committee." And they oversee after the fact is, is obscene to me, so, okay.
Did you have something else, Dr. Wyss? You're, you're okay?
I, 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 I just want the board to know, I, I welcome the conversation about the clarity on auditing versus a committee and what the purpose of that committee is.
Right.
Um, I, I will, um, I, I'll simply say the staff is audited and overseen by a lot of different groups. There are a lot of auditing requirements and statute, and then there are these additional pieces added. And I'm well aware that the, there are historical things that happened in the district, I think, that have led to all of this. It's a lot of work on a very small team. And I think if there's a desire for even greater oversight, um, then my budget request for next year out of operating will have to reflect a more robust staff team that can respond to all of those audit requests, audit requests and oversight requests, because they're doing all of that in addition to all of the state and federal compliance that's required. And, and all, right, and all of the day-to-day. So I, I, so again, I, I think it's a great conversation, because if, if there's signal from the board that, that you, you want even more citizen oversight, and you want faster, more responsive, then, uh, then that will at least help me to craft a staffing plan for the finance budget and the programming teams that reflects the staffing necessary to do that kind of work. Um, so I, I, I'm glad you all are gonna talk about that today, that regardless of where you go on the contours of the millage, if you want a different oversight structure, then as a staff, we have to adjust that. And, and as a reminder to the board, you've got a, I mean, you've got a, a long-time, highly respected at the state level auditor in the chief financial officer job. Um, and, and so she certainly understands the importance of audit and oversight. I just want to be sure that we're resourcing appropriately to the level of oversight that, that you expect.
My turn, okay. Um, Ms. Bray, you are where I was three years ago when we were going out for this, uh, for the, for the referendum. And when I first got on the board, I'm like, "It's gotta be in the general, teacher salaries have to be in the general fund. We're charging too much." And, um, and then I went to the FSBA one-point-o finance and went, "There's got, there's gotta be a mistake here. There's, there's a loophole," you know, and, and just had a really hard time with that. In fact, and, and I know that you would agree that we're not getting enough money from the state. You know, I mean, it, I've, I've heard you make comments about how they need to give us more money for Paris. And in fact, uh, we sat in Jim Boyd's office and said, "We, we need Paris, you know? Give, give us money for Paris, because we gotta get the early, uh, literacy up." And, um, so the board three years ago, before I went to the finance, said, they challenged me. "All right, go find what gets cut." And, ooh, I was mad, you know? I was really mad. Um, but they had a point. I understand it now. And, um, and in fact, when it came time to go to the public and say, "We need this money," um, I wrote an article, I just showed it to Ms. Sellers this morning, where it said, okay, because this was part of what I campaigned on. And then you get new information and you go, "Holy cow." Um, I think they, I called it my aha moment in this thing. But I was able to say, "Okay, yeah, we have a billion-dollar budget, but out of that budget, we're required to spend certain amounts of money." And then we had, um, we're left with, you know, we're left with about four hundred million dollars that the district uses for operations. And from that, it uses three hundred and forty-seven million for employee salary and benefits. The remainder pays for necessities such as utilities, classroom and custodial supplies, property insurance, and contracted services. And the numbers are different, but the concept is the same, that, um, we're not getting enough money from the state. And in fact, when you look at some of the, and I had asked Ms. Sellers about, to do this, because my favorite chart or bar graph is to show how the state's percentage of contribution to education is decreasing where the local is going up. And so we have to go to, to the public. And whether it's point seven five, 1.0, we've gotta do something, you know. And, and if we want some of these extras, we, you know, it's, it's gonna take the full mill. And as far as the up to one mill, I look at it from the taxpayers' point of view, or the voters. When they look at it and it says, we're gonna continue to levy up to one mill, they're gonna raise their, roll their eyes and go, yeah, we're talking one mill. There, there's just, you know, no question about it. And then when they get to, we're gonna use the money for athletics, they're gonna raise, roll their eyes on that, too. Because athletics, the athletic teams, is a small number of students that are receiving benefit from that. They're high schoolers, they're either soccer, they're baseball, they're football. But to, to benefit athletics at the, while reducing science and technology, reducing performing arts, I think that's, those, those are programs that benefit any student that wants it, that wants to take a class. But I know my children, you know, and I do have, I do have a bias towards performing arts. And because I had children who were probably the most clumsy people you'd ever see. And so, yeah, athletics was not their thing. And that's fine, you know, but they weren't hurt by it at all. They still graduated, they still had extremely good GPAs, they had, you know, they went to college, you know. So they succeeded, they met our vision. And if you take a look at our vision, student-focused school system develops lifelong learners to be globally competitive. Unless you're NFL, you know, I don't think you're gonna, you're gonna make that, so. But, but I'm digressing on that. I understand your issues with CFAC. You know, I was the CFAC liaison, you know, before you came on. And I certainly understand audit. And, yeah, I was never thrilled with how some of the STEM and the arts money got spent. And in fact, last year, I think arts got shorted. We, they were supposed to get two million and they got, they only got a million and a half. And this coming year, they're not even being asked what they want, which I think is deplorable. So, yeah, I have a problem with how money is getting spent. And there may be either things that are described strangely in, in the, in the spreadsheets. You know, I mean, somebody's entering that and entering what, what it is. And so, and no one is, on CFAC, is looking at the invoice. They're asking questions, which is awesome, okay? But CFAC, the, the people on CFAC are not auditors, okay? They don't have the skills to audit. And that's where I like the idea of, of audit on it. And I want, and I like the idea of doing it through the audit committee, just as the sales tax is done. Because CRI, our internal auditors, go out, they draw samples, they review, they report back to the audit committee. And believe me, there have been some heated discussions about some of the expenditures. You know, let's, let's talk about technology being paid out of, out of the sales tax. But, you know, we, we've had that conversation many times. But, uh, but it, it is a higher level of oversight. It's, it's a more professional, okay? And as far as having to hire someone for another audit, you can't have too many accountants, you know. So let's, you know, give her, give her what she needs or what she wants, you know, so.
No bias there.
No bias there either, no, 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 all my biases are showing here. I find, and as, and as far as the growth, you know, of the revenue coming in from growth, keep in mind, too, with growth comes more students. And so, and if the state's not providing enough per student, then we need to look to the local tax to, to help fund the additional students. So, so it's, and the points you made, too, about the, the graduation rates and where it says no conclusion can be drawn. That's because this, when this referendum was written, it was written vaguely as to the responsibility of the, of the oversight committee. And the oversight committee, there are so many variables that go into the outcomes. So many variables, why we're not retaining teachers, why we're not, you know, why we're having a reduction in, in, in masters. So many, so many variables that go into the graduation rates. Yeah, we had a pandemic and that's part of it, or could be part of it. We've also got a very politically charged environment that our teachers are working in. And there are people who are calling it quits, you know. So you can't say that the millage is not working, you know, based on, based on those numbers. I do have a question for Dr. Weisong, okay? And that's, the STEM and the arts, how is it all allocated to the schools? I mean, does it go, do the principals get, okay, here's your, here's your dollar amount and you go, you go do what you want with it? Or is someone telling them, okay, you're going to have a dance program and here's the money for dance?
So Mrs. Foreman, this year, and I think in, in, in last year with the arts, there was kind of a three-tiered approach to, once you have the arts allocation, ultimately, almost all of it is either going to schools or to district things that benefit all schools. But there's kind of a multi-tiered approach. So there's some money allocated for whatever, whatever ultimately the school and the instructors think the needs are. There's kind of a, 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 a set aside for some of the student competition and travel pieces. And then there's some money set aside for, you know, bigger, bigger ticket, meaning larger dollar items that, that, again, needs are gonna vary from school to school based on how long the school's been there, how long it's been since there's been a refresh, what leadership teams at those schools have prioritized with their discretionary funds in the past, whether there are organizations in place that fundraise, whether teachers write grants, right? As you said, there's so many variables. So it's been kind of a, a, a multi-pronged approach. Those are kind of the implementation details, right, that aren't gonna be in a resolution or in ballot language that, you know, we can certainly look at doing differently or not, depending on what the board does with the, with the big picture decisions about the ballot language.
If you have, if you have a principal who's more athletic as opposed to arts, are they likely to ask for less in terms of arts?
Well, to, to be clear, right now, under the STEM and arts, it's, it's, it's all formulaic, right? So it's not gonna be, it's gonna be, here's your, here's your budget, what things would you like to do? And then with arts specifically, right now, that's all rolling up to Mrs. Fleming, you know, for her, you know, for, for her review. But again, it, it really just depends, whatever implementation system we design will depend on what the, what the board does with the, with the ballot language and, you know, all of the, all of the specifics. Another, since you pointed out a lot of variables, certainly, the number of times the principal's seat has changed at a school over a 10-year period can affect where thing, you know, what's been invested in, you know, what the needs are, right? Because to your point, different leaders do have different, you know, priorities, preferences. Sometimes it's the skill of the, the faculty, right? And what their background is and how they advocate, you know, for more or do more with less or, or whatever. So again, I, I, I think it's really specific, you know, to each school. Some of our schools have more space for supplemental programming, some have less space. So, and I think that's why it's, it's hard to make it really one size fits all when our schools don't look like one another. And yet, the more, the more autonomy you provide, the more variance you have in implementation from school to school. So as with all things, it's, it's about trying to get the balance correct. And I think that's why there was an effort, like specifically with the arts millage, to say, we're, we're not just gonna hand you a check and go, go do what you want with it. We're gonna have some buckets that serve different purposes. And then you're going to complete a plan and that plan's going to be approved. And then we're gonna monitor around that plan.
Thank you. Yeah, I, the other thing on here, to say professional development, that's another eye roll. That's, that's professional development. In order to get the voter buy-in, they've got to look at this and say, yeah, the academics, the, the, the benefit to the students is not one layer removed, if you know what I mean. The professional development, if a teacher, you know, teachers go out for professional development, it may or may not help. It may or not make, may or may not make a difference. And that can be very expensive to send them to hotels and transportation. And it's ripe for abuse. And so I, I do have a problem with putting that one on the ballot. Same thing, same thing, you know, with, with athletics, I made my point on that before. But yeah, I could see where athletics starts overtaking some of the other programs. So in terms of, in terms of funding. I do really appreciate and like that the allocation will change every year. And I also, as Mr. Choak said, feel very strongly that we do not take away from, we do not reduce the teachers. And in fact, if we have a year where revenue goes down, I would like somehow for the, you know, this is a base, this is a minimum. We are not, never, not gonna go down below it, you know. And I don't know how we do that if the referendum fails. But, but I do, but I do appreciate that. And I think I've stated before, I have a preference for compensation for our people going, you know, going into future years. Right now is that we have got to get the para salaries up. We have got to get, so that they wanna come work here instead of Walmart. We've gotta get bus drivers competitive with our neighboring counties. We've got to get the mechanics and the, the custodians and the, you know, the repair people, the maintenance people. HVAC, you know, we've got to get those people to where we are competitive as well. And I think that what we've been doing with ASME in the past few years has just been kind of a pittance. And so it's time to, it's time to look at that. But yeah, I, I strongly ask that board members who might have a concern about how much we're asking out of the, out of the referendum. Number one, take a look at what that does to a person's, a person's property taxes. I calculated $70, $70 a year for, for, you know, for, for a resident of Manatee County to, to pay for our education, to help our education system, to me is just, you know. So anyway, and as far as the audit versus a committee, I would really like to see it done through the audit committee. And just have, have CRI come in and audit. And just like they do on the sales tax. I just think that gives a better look for the voters and also a better product. So, I agree, we gotta get that 30 minutes back in here, because that is, that is integral. And we don't want, that's kind of a guardrail for future board members and future board, you know, that, that 30 minutes is sacred. It's in, it's in the resolution, it's in the ballot language, not to be messed with, so. That's what I have to say, thank you.
Is it for now?
Thank you very much. Let's see. A lot of thoughts, I'm just trying to process them in my brain. It's good to listen to everybody, though, that way I get all the collective wisdom before I open my mouth. Use your brain before you use your mouth, right? That's always good. Let's start out with the Florida Constitution. Says, adequate provision shall be made by law for a uniform, efficient, safe, secure and high-quality system of free public schools that allow students to obtain a high-quality education. I just wanted to remind us all of that, that is the constitutional requirement. And without sounding too philosophical, when I took my oath, it said, I'll support and defend the Constitution, you know, the United States of America and also the state of Florida. So I wanna make sure that we're doing that. I like to use analogies, because I think sometimes it helps us understand difficult problems. So the uniform military guy, like I look out at the, let's say, the international security environment. And I say to myself, let's say someone like, like my congressman, let's say congressman, if you can, and sent me a message and he said, Mr. Tatum, we can lower your taxes by 20, $20 a year, or $40 a year, or 50, even $100 a year. But, you know, we're gonna cut the defense budget by X amount of money. After the Cold War, I might have said, yeah, you know, the wall came down and, and we actually did. I mean, I actually went through that in the early 90s when the wall came down. We wiped out a very large percentage of the United States military, because it really wasn't needed anymore, you know. So now I'll take that kind of analogy about the, the environment, so to speak. The environment look, you know, in the state of Florida, as far as taxes and inflation and education goes, to me is such that I'd like to lower taxes. I mean, I don't, you know, my, my home values, is valued at, you know, the auditor or the property appraiser has it at 440,000. So that means I pay $440 a year, apparently with one mill. Is that right? Is that how much I pay, right? One mill, right? Steve, okay, right? So, so, you know, I was sitting over here doing some math. And if we went down to point seven five, I think I came up with, I'd pay like $9.16 less a month. It's lower taxes, but in the environment that we're in, with rising inflation and rising costs and rising utilities, as much as I'd like to lower taxes, and, and by the way, as, as, as far as lowering taxes goes, you know, governments set tax rates, we don't set taxes. We don't say, you're gonna pay a hundred dollars less this, this year, two hundred dollars less. We set tax rates. And let's remind ourselves, this is one of the best charts I think I've ever seen since I've been here. This is on page, what page is this? Page ten, which is, it's not listed as page ten, it's before page eleven, oh, I know that. There's no page number on it. Oh, no, there is, I covered it up with some pen, it actually is page ten.
The green bars?
Yeah, the green bars. If you look at the middle yellow line and the top blue line, we have actually been lowering tax rates over the last, since the eighteen nineteen year. And the required local effort has been going down on average. If you look at it in seventeen eighteen, it was four point three six was the required local effort. This last year, it's three point one seven, I was doing some math. That's like about, it's been going down point one six over the last, if you took the average over the last seven years, point one six mil a year. So if we, if we, let's say we lowered the mil to point seven five and the trend continued because property values are going up. And it appears that the state keeps telling us, well, you don't have to, we're gonna lower the required effort every year because property values are going up. So if you took, and it's going down about point one six a year, so you, you take point two five off the mil, take it down to point two five, then you add another point one six to that, it's actually point one seven when I did the math. If the required local effort went down another point one seven mil and we took point two five off the mil, then we would actually be losing about point four two mil. Sorry to be doing a lot of math here on you, but I'm, I'm trying to make sense of all this. I mean, I, I'd like to ask the, the legal counsel over here real quick. We could actually, what, if I remember at one of our FSBA conferences on finance, or actually, maybe I read it in the law somewhere, one mil is not the maximum that we could be charging. Can't we go up to like two mil on a, on a, not that I wanna do it, I'm not saying, I'm just, I'm trying, I'm trying to make a point. What's the, is it one mil or is it, do you know off the top of your head?
You can go up to ten
Total.
when you add all the millage.
That's right. So we could, we could say, you know what, we want more money, we wanna go out to one point five. But I'm, I guess what, what I'm getting at, at least as far as the millage is, is that in the current environment that we're in, we need what we have. And we have to figure out what we can do with what we have, and what we have to me means keeping the one mil. And, and that's as far as the, the number, that's where I, I fall on that. Because in the envi, if we were in a different environment, if we were in a low inflation environment, if, like I said, I, I equate that to like the post-Cold War environment. If the environment were different, the, the general economic conditions of the country and the environment we were in were different, I might say, I think we could do with a little less money, just like federal government did with a lot less money and lowered the defense budget after the Cold War. But in the environment that we're in and being in this job now for a year, I, I don't see how we do away with what we have. We need what we have and we have to figure out how to make what we have work. So I'm not gonna ask, I wouldn't wanna ask for any more from the taxpayers, but I'd also like to let them know that I think we need what we have. And so as far as the mil goes, I'm, as much as I'd like to lower my own taxes, heck, I'd like to do away with the whole mil in the sense of, would I like to save four hundred and forty dollars a year? Sure, I don't know, I could do it that, that's a couple dinners at a nice French restaurant. Or it pays for a lot of gas when I do my felt delivery. I'd, I'd like to, but let me go back to the Constitution, how the state of Florida says, we have to provide an adequate provision shall be made by law for a uniform, efficient, safe, secure, and high-quality system of free public schools that allow students to obtain a high-quality education. And, you know, there is that old adage, right? You get what you pay for. You get what you pay for. And I just don't think in this environment, we can go with any less, but I wouldn't wanna ask the taxpayers for any more. And, and who knows, if, if this trend continues and you can't predict the future, but the, the required local effort will go down if it, you know, if the trends continue another point one seven. So the tax rate may actually go down, the overall millage rate may actually go down a little more over the next year. So, and again, we don't set tax amounts, we set, we set tax rates. And that tax rate has been going, and the tax rate, if you look at the blue line up here, has also been going down over the last six years, such that in the eighteen nineteen year, it was seven point three. And in the twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four school year, it was six point four. So we've lost point, about point nine mil. We've actually essentially lost the whole mil that we actually voted in. Okay, so that's the, hopefully that, I was clear enough on that? We'll see. Okay, so I, I made some notes through here, I just wanted to go through these if I could real quick. Number one, where, in the, in the one, two, three, four, fifth, whereas, it says, the board asserts the revenues generated by the additional millage have resulted in increased student achievement and a higher state ranking of the school district overall. And this will be for Dr. Dr. Weisong. Can we, there's two different parts of that statement. There is increased student achievement and a higher state ranking of the district overall. So if I were a citizen and, and I asked you, and I said, Dr. Dr. Weisong, can you, what, what evidence do you have to show that the millage resulted in increased student achievement, one, and higher state ranking of the district overall, two? What would you, how would you respond? And what, what kind of evidence would you provide? Or what could you say if I were a citizen asking that question?
The, the district's overall ranking, and again, that ranking is based purely on the outcomes of reading and mathematics assessments, has increased compared to, you know, compared to the other districts in the state. And we can, we can put any charts or tables or graphs that the board would like together. And, and, and keep in mind, that's, that, that's one measure of do you have a high-quality school district, right? Some things are, you go and you see them, as you and I did yesterday when we went to one of our middle schools. And within the span of half an hour, we watched a new band teacher doing an incredible job with students, right? Um, and kids getting all kinds of exposure to instruments that were funded by the current millage, right? Then we went to, um, a robotics room where you have seventh graders doing highly complex projects and able to explain them, right? Demo them as part of their competition preparation. We went to a speech and debate class, um, that was, uh, uh, preparing on a, on a, on a topic. And so we, we saw in just a few minutes, lots of evidence. That's, that's hard to turn into a ranking against other districts, right? But, you know, there are a lot of other, you know, but certainly on the, on the, on the reading and the math, we, we can, we can show those enhancements. And keep in mind, that's resolution language. So if we want to look at other types of outcomes, other than that, we certainly can.
I just wanna make sure that, that if we say that in the, in the whereas, that we can actually show it. And I would like, I wanna be informed on it so that if I have to go out and defend that, I can say, well, here's some evidence. And, you know, a two-page, a front and back primer on something like that might be helpful. So that, well, you say that, you know, increased student achievement happened and you got a higher state ranking, but I know that only fifty-three percent of the kids are reading at grade level. You know, you're gonna get some of that kinda stuff. I'm, so I'm, I'm actually asking the question not to educate myself, I'm not asking it to, are we doing that? Prove it to me. I, I just wanna make sure that we, 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 we think about that because if we say it, we have to be able to back it up. Number, number two I had marked here is if the res, if the voters of Manatee County decide that they do not, let's say a majority of the voters, because of the people who vote, the majority of the people who vote decide that they do not want to support this referendum. I'm kind of with Ms., with Ms. Foreman and I, I think you too, Mr. Cho, and maybe the other two. I didn't really hear you talk about this necessarily, but that we will find some way to make sure that employees don't take pay cuts. I mean, if we have to, you know, there's things we have to do and there's things that we like to do, you know? And I don't, and I know there's, there's the mathematics of that good idea in my head. But if, 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 if they don't support this, then we start looking at things like, do we have to have arts? You know, a certain level of arts, like what is it that, all right, and then that goes. Do we have, you know, can we refresh the, like this year, I know we did some refreshing of instruments at, at high schools and other schools because they were actually being held together with duct tape and things like that. Well, that doesn't get done. The security enhancements that we're talking about, which do run into millions of dollars, which recent events have shown us to be necessary and, and we want to find a really good balance between not making our schools prisons, but on the other hand, making sure that they're as safe as we really can make them, that's gonna cost many millions of dollars of money. And, but we don't have to do that. That goes. The bus aids, I think, we don't have to have bus aids, is that correct, Dr. Weisong? That goes. I mean, all the things that we don't have to do, they just, they just start going to make sure that, again, in this environment that we're in, that we're, employees are not gonna get pay cuts. Now, they may not get pay raises, but I don't know, I mean, is that, is that even mathematically possible if the millage doesn't pass?
So, so Mr. Tatum, we, we've obviously talked about this as a leadership team. What will, what I believe literally happens on June thirtieth of twenty-five without a reauthorization, without a new millage, is first, this, the, the salary supplements. And remember that they are supplements, it's shown that way on paychecks. Those, those would end, right? And then all of this other funding, arts, STEM, CTE, the payments to the charter schools, because remember, they share in the millage, all of that gets zeroed out. In terms of employee salary and benefits, we would then go back to the bargaining table because this is all gotta be collectively bargained, right? We would go back and then talk about what are our next steps. Remembering, and, and there's a slide in, in the presentation that we showed at the last work session that breaks down what's currently in our general fund, right? Forget all the other money and, and, and capital and everything else. In the general operating fund, sixty-eight percent of that fund is already salary and benefits. And then about fifteen to sixteen percent is proportionate share to charters, right? So that, that's already locked in. And so where you would find additional money for salary and benefits would be, you would start going through contracted services, right? And figuring out what, what are we not gonna do anymore? And so that could involve the shutting down of certain curriculum programs, other extracurriculars and co-curriculars, um, other programs that have been added. Um, and of course, when you, when you have to do that, it does then shape the staffing a little bit, right? Because then if you don't have programs, you don't need people to staff them. And so that might free up some money because you'd be working with a smaller workforce. But that's only gonna change at the margins because the bottom line is, we also have to make class size in our academic disciplines, right? And so we, we're still gonna teach reading, math, science, and social studies. We may do it very differently, but we would do it. Your, your secondary electives would be impacted. Things that are in the curriculum that we're doing locally that are not required by statute, that, those, those things would be in jeopardy. So, and, and it, it would be no different, we, we, we would bring you a budget proposal that lives within our means. Would, would student experience be drastically different? Yes, it would be. Would we be able to fully restore those, those salary supplements? I don't believe that we would be able to, I just don't think the numbers would work. Um, because remember, part of that general fund also keeps the lights on, right? Um, and so that's a, that's a fixed cost, huh, too. Now, if, I guess if you have fewer evening activities going on, maybe your, your power bill gets a little bit lower, but, you know, we're, we're not talking about huge differences. So, um, yes, the, the, the impact would be significant. There would be no way right now for this leadership team to be able to say employees would be held harmless. It would, it would be irresponsible for me to say that.
It is, it is, it's kinda water under the bridge, what's been done in the past. But it is a lesson for governments in general to not try and set up reoccurring expenses on, or, yeah, to set up reoccurring expenses with non-reoccurring funds. It's just a bad management practice. And I wish I could wave a magic wand and change that. But it, but it is, that is how, that is the, the plate that we've been served or the cards that we've been dealt, so to speak. But I would, I, I do wanna get away from as much as we can having to say that if this doesn't pass, you know, and just using the employees as this banging, but I don't, but, but on the other hand, it is what it is. I'm not smart enough to figure out how to fix it, nor I think all of us collectively are in this room, even how to fix it. But it is a lesson. Okay, that's, that was a good discussion on philosophy, we'll move on from there. But i- i- if for some reason it would not pass, I would really advocate for, I would really wanna see from your, Dr. Weisong and your staff, everything that, like you said, all the stuff that's not legislatively required, we're just gonna, we're just gonna, you'd have, you're gonna have to show me before we do employee cuts that I have really gone through and wiped out everything that I possibly can, and now we have to do employee cuts, you know? I mean, I, I wanna make that commitment to the employees of the school system that before I vote for a budget that shows you taking a pay cut, I, I will wanna see that everything that's not legislatively required has been, you know, and that's a philosophy idea, right? I mean, there's the practicality of that and the devil's always in the details. But my general idea going into that is I don't wanna see employees take pay and benefit cuts. And if we're gonna do that, I'm really gonna wanna see that we've wiped out everything that we don't have to do before we go down that road. So that's my, my statement on that. Let's see. So, Mr. Cho, I'm, I'm, I'm on board with, with athletics. I think they're equally as important as arts because some children come to school because they love their band class. And some children come to school because they love their football or their soccer. So what, could you help me understand a little bit more? Maybe what, what would that fund exactly? How would we use that money? What would we be doing with some of that money?
I wouldn't necessarily dictate how we spend it or put a, you know, percent, you know, I don't, again, like I said, I wanna be able to have it flexibility. But, I, I mean, I, I would guess I would defer that to Dr. Weisong, but, but the thought behind adding it to me was expenses that I believe as a district, we should be paying instead of it coming out of internal school funds. Let's be honest, if there's a school that, that doesn't have revenue coming in to pay for their athletics, yet they, they still got twenty-five kids that wanna be on a soccer team, they've gotta pay for it somehow. They gotta pay for buses and officials somehow. And if they're not getting that revenue from boosters, ticket sales, et cetera, where are they getting it from? Well, they're getting it from their internal school account, I'm assuming. And where else could those internal school accounts go to? If we as a district were paying for that bus or that trip? I mean, that's my overall thought, but I mean, as far as all the other, I mean, I would just defer to how the staff picked that and maybe there's an advisory, I mean, I don't, that's a, just like there's an art council.
Mr. Cho, the, the source of revenue for internal accounts are fundraisers, ticket sales. You know, it's not from the district, it is, you know, um, so I'm, I'm losing, you've lost me there, you know? They're paying, they're paying for themselves, uh, other than the hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Potentially, yeah. I mean, I guess, that's
Yeah, I mean, that's where the money go, comes from, is ticket sales and
That's fine.
fundraising and concession and
Correct. But, I, I mean, again, I'm not looking at, I don't look at every school and I can't give you exactly details. But there, I'm, would be highly surprised, there's several high schools that probably are a little bit different in revenue that comes in and they're being supplemented. They, well, they get more from the school, I know that, or they get more from the district than other schools because of that change. But to me, there's basics, things that I would want it to pay for. But to me, there's basics, things that I would want it to pay for, that I'll be, again, I would defer back to, to Dr. Weisong on how that would be implemented.
Well, overall, I, I don't have a problem with having athletics in there. I, I trust that us and he will do the right thing and proportionately divvy out where it's needed. Because you're right, I think certain high schools don't get as much internal funds as other high schools get. And if, if, if one of our high schools needs new basketball uniforms or football uniforms, and their internal funds aren't providing the funds to do that, to me, that's the same as replacing the band instruments that are being held together with duct tape. So, I don't have a problem with athletics. Let's see, number four on my list here. So, as far as the charter schools go, let me say this in general, I'm not a fan of all these percentages. I'm, I'm not a fan of that because what we've seen it do is, it's, it's, that's not the, I need to. It's put us in a position where, as Ms. Spray pointed out, we started out with this much supplement to the employees, and then it, and now, it just kept growing every year. And now, we've gotten ourselves to a point where we, to not give the employees pay cuts, we have this ever larger and growing amount of money that we have to provide them without giving them pay cuts. So, I, I would just, I don't wanna see, I would prefer not to have any more percentages. But maybe, Dr. Weisong, you could answer this for me. So, public charter schools, let's say we didn't have any percentages in there that, like 12% or whatever it was, went to charter schools. How would we, would we just send a proportionate amount of money based on students? Like, for every student, you, you just get a student, and that's how much you get? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, yes, you, you would do that by proportionate share. So, if you look at, you know, the total number of students in charter schools versus district managed schools, at, you know, a, a, as the charter number goes up, the percentage of the funding going out goes up, that's almost a, kind of a top line expense, right? So, however much money is collected, and then you've got one slice of the pie coming out for charters, then divided proportionally among those charters, and then the slice, whatever's left of the pie is, is, then what you're doing the, to the district, right, to the schools, to the district managed schools, whether that's predefined percentages or annually approved as part of the budget or whatever.
Because I'm trying to look for those charts here. Isn't, isn't it in there, in this?
Yeah, that, that page 17 shows the, what the charter schools got, like how that, how the referendum this past year was divided up. Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, and that was.
18% went to charters.
But if we didn't have a percentage, it would just be, it would just be the math. Here's a number of charter students over the, you know, if there are 10,000 charter students, and we have 55,000 students total in the county between charter and traditional public schools, then they get, we get 45, whatever would, 45,000 students equivalent would be, and they get another, they get the 10,000 students. I mean, it's just a math problem. It's just, like 45,000 over 55,000, whatever that percentage is, that's what we get, and they get the other percent. It's not a, it wouldn't be a defined percentage. Or is that how we're doing it now?
That, that is how we're doing it now, which is why if, if you look at that slide 17, and I don't know if we can put that up on the monitor, just so we're, we're helping folks who are watching online. The 22, 23 actual distribution to charters was 16.87% of the funds. In 23, 24, that grew to 18.18% of the funds. And again, that's because charter enrollment grew this year relative to enrollment at district managed schools. So, and that's why I said, that's, that's off the top. And then, we kinda go from there.
So, that is how we're doing it now. It's just a math problem. It's just.
Correct.
Percentage of total students divided by percentage of.
That's, that's correct.
And then, the allocation by school is by FTE at each of those.
FTE, one of those goes, great. Okay, thank you for clarifying that. I agree, I agree with Ms. Foreman that the professional, I'm not a fan of the professional development language. You, you could, you could say everything we do is professional, I mean, not everything. A lot of things that we do is professional development. It's kind of a vague term, and the term right for abuse comes up, not that we would, but it, it's, it's kinda like with the STEM and STEAM money, then you start to get it in this gray area of, did you use it correctly? Did you not use it correctly? Comes down to somebody's judgment. So, I would be a fan of taking out the words professional development. Unless, Dr. Weisong, you think that there's something absolutely necessary that those words need to be in there? Or what are your thoughts on that?
Again, I think if the board's number one priority in its strategic plan is reading achievement, then that's where we should be investing staff training. And with the turnover that we have seen, not just in Manatee, but in all districts, and with the fact that we're getting fewer new teachers out of the colleges of education, traditionally trained with an education degree, that we're, we're getting a higher percentage of career changers coming into the classroom, and it, teaching a child how to read, right, is, is, is a, is a, is a skill that takes time. And so, I just, I, my opinion is, if that's the board's top priority, we have to invest in our workforce. And frankly, it's part of the retention strategy, right? If we, if, if we give our teachers the tools they need to teach our kids to read and, and, and to address all of the different well-being challenges that are out there, those teachers are gonna, are gonna wanna stay with us. And, and, and I, I certainly, I understand Ms. Foreman's point earlier about the costs of, of staff development. That doesn't always have to be done by sending people to conferences. Sometimes it's bringing in people to us. The, the other part of that professional development piece is, a lot of that work gets done in the summer. Because remember, ultimately, teachers are still working on these 196-day, 10-month contracts, but the school year's 180, and, and you have federal holidays in there, too. So, there's really very little time in the contract year for professional development. And if we're gonna ask our teachers to come back early in July or stay late into June, and they've got their childcare expenses and their family needs, we've gotta pay them for the time that they show up and receive that training. Again, if, 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 if the board doesn't think it fits here, that's fine. We'll adjust as a leadership team. But I do think a key to getting to the reading piece that you all wanna see is that investment in teacher training.
Good.
Wouldn't, wouldn't that come, that could also come out of the early literacy?
The additional support, yeah.
You know, as opposed to, because you say professional development, you could, it could be somebody who's teaching physics, you know? That's not the professional development that we, that aligns with our strategic plan. We want, we want the early literacy as our priority.
So, like that language.
So, professional development could be paid if it's related to literacy.
I agree with you. Now, in the example you gave, right, professional development for physics teachers, I would argue that is aligned to the board's strategic plan, right? As it relates to acceleration opportunities, very advanced STEM. So, that's in the strategic plan. I think the, again, if, if, if the board's signal is around, you know, reading and literacy, that's where we would invest the dollars anyway. I think putting the professional development in there gives us more flexibility. But if you feel like that's in the way, then yes, I think we could do the professional development through early learning. But there's also been some discussion about, you know, different opinions about what is an okay expenditure or what isn't. And so, I, I, you know, I think it's, I think it's good to spell it out within the 75-word limit that we have. But if the board's comfortable, and if we're on the record as saying we can do professional development on literacy with the, with this funding, then that works for us as a team.
If we wanted to keep the words, we could put it before additional programs. So, we could say, professional development and additional programs. I'm sorry. Professional development and additional instructional supports for pre-kindergarten and early literacy programs. That way, it focuses the professional development on early literacy. Although, I'm okay with, as, as it's written right now, additional instructional supports. What does that term mean, Dr. Weisong? Instructional supports? What, what? You know, as a, as a technical term, what does that, what does that mean? What does that, I mean, if you had to define that in 30 seconds?
To me, that means everything from funding additional classroom assistance at K through three. That could be additional curriculum, you know, that's needed. I, I think an example of that is, we're seeing more policy interest in dyslexia. And I know we're tested, the board just approved an MOU so that we can, we, we can do some additional work in that area. So, you know, again, it could be specific intervention curriculum coming in. So, I think it's, again, it's broad, depending on what the data is showing us our, our, our needs are.
Do you think that professional development of early literacy programs would fall within the definition of instructional support?
I think we could, I, I think we could, I mean, I would be comfortable arguing that.
The only reason I say that is, I'm comfortable with it. To me, that make, when I see additional instructional support for pre-kindergarten and early literacy programs, in my mind, that would mean, if you have to, if you have a, a training opportunity or development opportunity for people who teach early literacy and pre-K literacy, and to me, that would fall within the definition of that. But if we wanna be really clear, we could just move the words professional development before additional instructional supports, and say, professional development and additional instructional supports. Just a thought. Let's see, number, let's see, my next point. I, so when I make this comment, I want the people that are on the CFOC to know that I value citizens who volunteer their time to try and do something good for the community. And I know that there are lots of people on that committee that take their job seriously and are trying to do what's right for the community. But my overall assessment, when you weigh the pros and the cons of the CFOC, are that I think the cons outweigh the pros. And I think the cons are, I don't know that they are, because they're not professional CPAs, and they're essentially doing an auditing function to some degree, I'm not sure that they're the right people for that job. Such as, if I was asked to go into a, I don't know, I was thinking about this earlier, a medical organization and do an audit on whether or not certain medical practices fell within the definition of a statute or something, I would say, I, I'm not a medical professional. I don't, I don't know. I, I can look at and give you my opinion, but I don't know. The other thing is that I have seen that the CFOC, to some degree, can be, can be political. And I've actually seen people that were on the CFOC while they were on the CFOC actively campaigning against the millage while they were on the CFOC. And they, and then we get to appoint them, right? Were they getting appointed by us? All that to say that I think the cons of the CFOC outweigh the pros of it, and I would like to go with a professional auditor who's unbiased, where they're, they're not chosen by us up here. They won't be out campaigning against the, the millage while they're on the CFOC. So, I would go with the, I would prefer to see professional auditors do it, whether we give it to CRI or some other organization. I would prefer to see it as a professional auditor performing that function. And then, my last comment is that initially, I liked the millage language of up to one mil. But I tend to agree with Ms. Foreman, and I even think that to myself, that because of the environment that we're in, and this goes to what Ms. Messenger was saying earlier, that we don't see costs going down anytime soon, and they're gonna probably continue to keep rising based on inflation and economic prospects. It, it will turn out that we will probably ask for the one mil every year, and that will just be, it will look like we were trying to, I need to find the right words again, when you're sitting up here to pull a fast win or something on the voters, when we kinda knew all along that, as I've said, and I guess I publicly stated, I don't wanna ask for any more, but I don't wanna ask for any less. So, I, I think we should just say, yep, it's gonna be one mil. That's what we're asking for. We'd like you to, to help us out with that. And the last comment then that I will make is that I understand Ms. Messenger's concern as we walked into the meeting today about having this resolution, a draft already done for us. But I, I understand, too, that I think you were trying to be helpful. And I think we've all talked about this enough where we can make our inputs into this. I think you were just trying to give us a starting point to go from rather than having to, quote unquote, develop it from scratch. And so, I, I, I believe that your intentions were good and that you were trying to be helpful. You were just developing this from scratch, and I think that, to me at least, it gave me a good starting point to think about and to listen to everybody else. So, so I appreciate that. It could have been done differently. We could have maybe tried to start it from scratch, but I think that would have taken a much longer conversation. And so, I will end my comments for now, right there. Thank you very much.
We'll be more around. We need a break. It's 11 o'clock.
Thanks.
So, so 11:15, let's reconvene.
So eleven fifteen, let's reconvene.
Oh, we changed, Kevin changed.
Or is that use of school resources?
Oh, started too early.
Think about it.
You're good? Okay. Ms. Cox is going to pass around some edits that as we were discussing, Mr. Chapman so kindly dwindled some things down. I think, I think it was mainly on the ballot language, correct? And the whereas stuff will fix. So, so I think there was a consensus on leaving it at one mil. I see moving down. He put student achievement through, and this is where, and this is just from, from us talking. This isn't the final thing. Student achievement through professional development and more instructional time and efforts. Where did you put, did you get rid of early literacy? Oh, I'm sorry. Early literacy programs, I see it. Career and technical education, change that back to using that language. Okay.
Did we get the thirty minutes in there? Did we want that?
The thirty minutes was not in the original ballot language, but it will be in the whereas. We'll add it to the whereas. So if you go back and look at the old, the old resolution, it does say whereas, we're going to add thirty minutes, which was like the second page, second whereas, are utilized to add thirty more minutes. We could just add that whereas if we're all okay with that. Maybe we can talk about that as we continue to go.
Can we change this to now say the school board instead of the school district?
Sure, I don't care about that. Yeah.
We're the one that levies the tax.
Anyone care about board or district? I don't care about that.
I like the board, and we're the one who does.
Yeah.
It's us.
Let's blame it on them.
Dr. Weisong raised your taxes, wasn't it me?
Exactly. So as we, as, as obviously we all went around, we'll probably go around again. Just just out of curiosity, and Dr. Weisong, you can maybe help with this, I guess. With charter, I know charter schools is statutory, we have to have them in there, which is fine. But do they, when they are given their funds from the referendum, do they have to follow what is in any kind of our resolution or anything like that to use those funds for?
I don't believe they're obligated to do so. I'm just looking to.
I'm seeing nodded yes from Ms. Barber, so, okay. So, so, so they do now have to follow and if it's for operations, they can't take that money and go build a new wing or something like that. Okay. But, I mean, if they don't have the capabilities of putting it towards early learning, because they don't have that, they don't necessarily have to follow word for word, right? Okay. That was just out of curiosity. I wanted to know that. So then at the very bottom, I think one thing that we still have to discuss, probably one of the biggest is with oversight by an independent auditor to ensure proper use of funds. I know Ms. Foreman and Mr. Tatum mentioned it. I really didn't mention, I mean, I think that the more, the more that we can, or the less, I guess you could say, make our staff more, more efficient and less work that is not their normal daily duties. I mean, you know, we're asking a staff to do a lot more than what they can. And if one, if one, if as they're doing the normal auditing systems, we can have that group continue to do it, to me is, is just more efficient, and it's more efficient of, of our staff. And, and the audit committee, or excuse me, there's still going to be, I guess it really comes down, like, what did we ever want? And I don't remember, my interpretation may be different than what it was in 2018. Like, what was the CFOC's role? And if it, if it is truly, and I believe it was truly to evaluate or look at, hey, are we spending this money where, where we said we were spending this money on? Or are we using it on something else? That is, to me, was their role. I did not see their role as being, they are looking to say spending money on this STEM course is not the right thing to do educationally for our kids. I, I mean, everyone's going to have their own opinions on that. I just don't see how, how, I, I just, I just think that, that for, for staff purposes, I think for simplicity, let's make sure that we are telling the people, the public, look, we are going to make sure that these funds are used for exactly what we're telling you they're used for. And that is an auditor, an independent auditor, looking at it and saying, this is what they're, it's being used for. I, I would go on that route of using an independent auditor. I would be okay with almost saying our, our own audit committee, but then that's work on them and they're doing other stuff too. So, you know, I don't necessarily, if that's the solution, but at least we have someone that's, that's looking at it from a, hey, are you using this money on what you said you were using it on, would be my, would be my route. I don't know. I know Ms. Foreman is, I think, I don't want to put words in your mouth. I think that's what you said.
Yeah. And, and as far as, you know, the staffing goes, staff is having to provide information now as it is. And so it's, you know, is it going to be more if it's an audit or less? It's hard to say. But I think it will certainly be a little less stressful because they'll be getting their, their request for information from a, from an audit firm. And the reason I said audit committee was, and again, that got a little wonky too when, with the sales tax, because the audit committee does not audit, and so, you know, they had to work around that. So if you say an independent auditor, there's still need to report to, put their, give their report to the audit committee. Because that's the function of the audit committee is to evaluate the product. So, so, yeah.
The product of the actual audit itself.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And. And, yes, and what's different is originally, the CFOL was asked to not only ensure proper use of the funds, but also to evaluate the outcomes, which that is just so, so impossible to put, you know, to, to evaluate the outcome. So, so I like the wording of this, ensure proper use of funds. However, I still don't like professional development.
Well, that was gonna be my next question, I wanted to ask everybody. So, I definitely get the argument of professional development is vague, but I don't know if, I, in early learning literacy and early learning just in general is definitely a focus of ours, there's no question, we've already established that. But there are other things that I believe, and if we wanna get more specific, I guess we can, but where professional development could be used for other than, than just early learning. And I'll give a great example, I mean, I'm not gonna go into crazy detail, we don't need to go into crazy stuff, it's already been out there. But what happened a couple of weeks ago in one of our schools, something, was it, was it something that the teachers, obviously they should've done something differently, they should've done what they've, what they did, but were we, we had to look at ourselves and say, are we providing professional development to learn what, I shouldn't have to say what learn what not to do, but, you know. And again, I know I don't wanna get into specifics, I think we all know what I'm talking about. But, you know, especially with, when we're dealing with, with ESE students, could we potentially use professional development for those specific teachers to help them in learning better techniques that are out there, to deal with these, with children with, with the social and, and issues? So that's where I don't, that's, that's where, that's where I was going with the professional development. And, and so, I mean, I get, I get that it could be vague, and you could throw anything under there, I just hope we wouldn't. Dr. Weisong, do you have anything to add to that? I don't know.
Yeah, I think, well, I think the way Mr. Chapman worked the draft is the professional development has to be linked to student achievement, right? It's student achievement through professional development. So, anything that, anything that were to come to me for approval for funding, that, that nexus is gonna have to be there, and, and if it's not clear, then it shouldn't be funded from here.
How about we say, instead of professional development, we say staff training? No. You don't like that?
No.
I, I mean, I think it's the same thing, I think it's a little bit less of a...
It's the same thing, but it's, we're talking, we're talking voters here. Voters are gonna look at professional development, that sounds like, it sounds like we're getting on a plane and going, you know, that they're getting on a plane and going, staying in the hotels, you know, that's professional.
That's what they've done.
That's interesting that that's what you think of when you see the word professional development, because as a teacher, I look at those words and go, that's gonna be one afternoon when all the kids go home, and I'm gonna be sitting in the media center...
Sitting in the auditorium.
...learning about the newest techniques, about behavior management, or the new curriculum. Like, that's...
That's different from training. And, and we're not talking about teachers. Teachers are only a small minority of the voters. We're talking about the people who retired from IBM, professional development.
No, I, I understand what you're saying, I'm saying, I think it's funny that you picture that word differently than me, that's all I'm saying.
Oh, okay.
But if you link it to student, if you link, if you link it through student achievement, that does tag to where, if, if it's a frivolous professional development, it's not gonna be linked to, how are we going to better teach our kids or handle our, then it won't be picked.
Well, those ESE teachers, it wouldn't have been part of, their, their, their training or development would not have been part of this, because it's student achievement.
I mean, yeah, you could argue, yeah, Mr. Chapman.
A suggestion could be professional learning instead of the word development, as a suggestion for the board.
Okay. Ms. Breck?
Okay, when I hear professional development, I go back and I see the spreadsheets and all information that CFOL was provided, and there are thousands and thousands of dollars of airline tickets and hotels. That, to me, is, okay, is that professional development? Are we sending them all over the country, all over the country for different training, different things that they're going to bring back to our students? To me, professional development could be a multitude of things. You're going to a conference. Okay, you're going to a conference for what? We all have been to conferences. What do we bring back and provide the district with that information? I wanna go back to, if I may...
I'm sorry, but professional development was not on the last millage.
Right. But I'm saying, professional development can be, to Ms. Foreman's point earlier, some of it can be misdirected. I'll say, things can be misdirected. And, for instance, I'm gonna have to go back to the beginning, I guess, but, for instance, on one, at one school, going back to the arts millage, they were allocated so much money, and I see one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight staff members getting a big chunk of dollars, and in that, there were actual private lessons being given by our staff to students. Private lessons should never come from a staff to an individual. To me, private lessons should never have been part of this arts millage, so I had to get that out there. Also, going back to slide 10 of the chart of how the dollars have gone down, back when we were doing the levies, our capital was a 1.5 mil. Even, let's go back to even 2018, when all of this came about, there was a lot of conversation about, well, we could do this for four years, and in that four years, we can figure out a way to get all of the teachers' pay into the general fund without going to the voters every four years. That was a huge topic that was discussed up here. It was also discussed the last time around, trying to figure out how we can get, not tie all of the pay to a ballot. And that hasn't happened at, at all. In my time on this board, and prior to my being on this board, I never saw discussion about how we were gonna get pay into the general. You know, maybe we could've, you know, put the capital project at 1.0 mil and taken that 0.5 up into the general, but we didn't have any kind of conversation. I understand that, we can't do that now, but I'm just saying. And then to Mr. Tatum's point of $490 a year, so much a month, or whatever, might not be much for you, but it's quite a bit for others. I mean, when we were doing the, voting for the millage rates, how many public commenters did we have come to the podium talking about their taxes and how they're being priced out of their homes because of taxes? And their school district taxes are the highest on their bill. I just think that, and I said it before, and it passed all well and good, but I think in these trying times, you're gonna have a, a lot, and it being on a general ballot too, you're gonna have a hard time getting a whole mil. That's why I'm like, let's go with the 0.75, stick with that, and, and advocate as hard as we can for that. I just know the climate out there, and it's not good for a whole mil. Of course, all of the employees and their family are gonna get out and vote, that's what they did before, but this is a general. This is the first time, I believe. Am I correct? Is this the first time it's on the general?
Yes.
Well, not the first time, the 18 was on general.
No, no, no. It was a special. It was a special. So, that is the fear. And it's not so much a fear, that's the risk that you might be taking. So, you know, when I go back and I see private lessons, to me, that's a misuse of funds. When I see projectors, when I see recruiting disbursements, $29,750, transportation disbursement, $175,000, and anytime our students go somewhere for band, dance, athletics, like, to your point, Mr. Cho, it all comes from internal accounts where parents are paying for their students to go to a specific event. If they're going from, I went to a football game at Southeast, they were playing Palmetto, there were three charter buses for one football game. So, are the students paying for part of that, as well as the district and the millage? It's so many buckets that are going into every activity, you can't really define what's being paid out of what. And that's why it's so hard to do the measurables with the CFOL, because it's all coming from so many different sources. But going back to, there's never, there hasn't been any conversation about why we keep going to the taxpayer to pay our teachers, when our teachers should be the top priority. And there's never been that conversation, it's just, oh, we'll just do it, we'll just do it out of a referendum every four years, and put the stress on the teachers, and even on the voters. Oh my gosh, I gotta pick if I'm gonna support the district, or if I'm gonna support my own family. And that's what it boils down to right now in this high economic climate that we're in. So, okay. Page one of the whereas, the second whereas, I believe it says, provide to, the second sentence, provide to students attending is public, and I believe it should say, and charter schools, because we have charter schools over here. So I believe that that should be in there as a whereas. Maybe I'm wrong?
Charter schools are considered public.
Yeah, they're considered public schools. So when you just, when you say public schools, it encompasses all of them.
I don't think that's what that language necessarily reflects, to me, you have on...
I'll make a quick comment there, that a lot of people don't know what charter schools are, and so you could put some, you could put this, public schools to include charter schools, and that way people know that charter schools are included in public schools, because people will ask me a lot, they'll say...
That's my point, thank you.
They'll say, can you explain to me what a charter school is? And I'll go, well, it's a public school, but it's financed like this, so, to add that, those words, to include charter schools...
Won't hurt.
Wouldn't hurt, and might somehow let people know that it does include charter schools, and maybe influence their decision whether to or not to vote for the resolution. So you could add that, excuse me for jumping in.
That, thanks for the interjection, I think that is more clarity, because a lot of people don't understand that the charters are under us. They think they're independently ran, but we oversee a lot of what they're doing. I wish we could oversee a whole lot more of what they do, to be honest with you, but... So I would like to see that, and again, I am, I just can't budge from the 0.75. I think that's gonna be more than enough to cover what we have been using the past four years, and with this being, again, on the general ballot, you're gonna have a whole lot more than just teachers and employees showing up at the voting booths.
So I just did the quick math earlier with 0.75, you're looking at like 52 million, if it was the same amount as this year, instead of 69 million, we'd have got about 52 million. So, if teachers were paid 35 million out of the 69 million, we wouldn't, I mean, just 0.75 is not, I mean, I just, I don't think it's gonna...
Okay, you can go to teachers, but let me look at this pay chart.
And I completely, I don't disagree with, hey, let's get them out of the referendum, but something's gotta be paid out of the money that's coming in. And so, my thought is, if it goes into the general fund, and, and how many times, like even when we did, even on this, I forget what page it is, but like, we've got like $30 million worth of, of expenses that aren't, that are mandated, we have to do, that we don't get revenue for. So you add that on top of, of, I just, I don't think, the 0.75, I just, I don't even know, it would still be lower than what we're doing.
I'm looking at the 2022, 23 referendum pay adjustment that was provided. I mean, you have, I mean, the focus is teachers, that's what everyone focuses on, but I looked through here, and I'm seeing principals, assistant principals, athletic administrators, all getting a supplement. And then counselors, then, oh, behavioral specialists, deans, psychological, social workers, behavioral specialists, again, in two different categories. I mean, I just believe that if you're gonna focus on teacher and teacher retention, then let's, let that be the key point. I mean, this would go back into, okay, who's gonna get it? Who is, who is more, who interacts with those students at a daily, every day, in the classroom basis? It's the teacher and the para. And then you have to go down to the bus driver. You know, they get an hourly adjustment, where every other category gets, other than non-bargaining, you know, they don't get a supplement, they get an hourly. So, it's just a whole lot of, you know, going back again, there's never been an effort to get teachers' pay into the general fund, and that was a conversation in the beginning of this whole millage back in 18.
I guess my, my question, I, I looked at it, I've looked at it personally with Tim a couple of years ago, so I don't know if you have or haven't, but I did, and it just doesn't work, the math doesn't work. You have to eliminate a lot of things in order to get there, it just doesn't work. And we're competitive, and we're the highest salary compared to Sarasota, who typically was always ahead of us, because their millage goes into the general fund, and they spend it however they want, based on the language, right? And that's, this is what it is. There's, that's the only reason why they've ever been higher. They take that money and they do what they want with it. Nobody complains, they love it, they got good schools. Why? Because they play their people well, and they got great programs, because they're paying them. We've gotta do the same if we wanna be competitive. Dr. Weisong, you had, I don't know if you were saying...
I just wanna clarify, and maybe Ms. Sellers can put up slide 17, and this is the same slide deck we went over at the last workshop, but just so everybody has the numbers.
17?
50, yep, that's it. So, and again, that, that pie chart is, yep, that one. That pie chart is showing both percentages and dollars what's being spent now. So 51% of the roughly 70 million is going to instructional staff, so that is teachers and others who are within the definition of instruction. It's important for all of those people to benefit, because you, you, you have to create parity so that people want to become guidance counselors. The principals, assistant principals, and there's seven athletic directors, they're included, because they, they do impact student achievement, the research on the role of the principal's very, very clear. But the other piece of that is, again, doing that work requires people to go get a master's degree in ed leadership, and pass more tests, and become all of that, and so, you, you have to, you have to also pay your administrators so that there's differentiation there, otherwise, you're not gonna get teachers...
Who wanna do it.
...who wanna do that work. And we've gotta have great principals and assistant principals. So... So, so it is structured to benefit instructional staff and administrative, and school administrative staff. No one who works in this building benefits directly from the millage in terms of salary and benefits, which, you know, that, that was how it was set up. And so, the good news there is the taxpayers are funding people who directly, daily impact student achievement. The unintended consequence of not spending millage funds on all employees is that we have positions that aren't attractive to people anymore, because those positions don't benefit from the millage. And so, for example, when we have a curriculum specialist type of job where that supplement's not included, you want really great teachers to apply to lead curriculum, but the loss of that millage funding makes the job unattractive. So, there is, there is an unintended consequence to focusing on the employees at the schools in the trenches, although we all certainly support that. But there is downside to that, too. But if you weren't funding the guidance counselors and the deans and the student support specialists, no one would be willing to do those jobs and their critical work so that teachers can teach.
Messenger? The only one that was here in 2018, when we did decide to move forward with this in twenty, we made the decision in 2017, and I'm just gonna say that the board, as a whole, never said that the intention was that it would only be for those four years and that would be it. The board did not say that. There were two board members who ran around town saying all kinds of stuff, and I can think of at least one or two other community members that ran around town saying all kinds of stuff. And there are certain pockets of the community that believed what those community members said, rather than listening to actually what the board said. And that's unfortunate. But I can tell you that that is not what the board said. The board understood that there was, as Mr. Tatum has said, that the millage rates have declined, they have declined every day since they've sat here. Every day. That's what they do, every year. The board saw it happening even back in 2017 and knew we had to be competitive, because we could not keep our teachers, we could not keep our principals, we could not keep the staff that we needed, because they'd all go down to Sarasota County. That was what was happening. So, the purpose was always to make us competitive. Would it have been ideal that it was in the general fund? Yeah. And you know what? We had two board members on our board at that time that had amazing financial acumen, and I challenged both of them. Sitting on this dice, I challenged both of them to find us the money, because they wouldn't support this. Find us the money. They never did. So, I really, this has made a huge difference, and I, and I can't even express how grateful I have been that the community has supported it. But the community has been very clear in their support. And the illusion that you can find it somewhere else, that's just not accurate. The illusion that somehow if we didn't do it the way we did it, that we'd somehow still be competitive, that's just not accurate. We all know the constraints that we're under, thanks to the, our legislature. They've been doing it for years, longer than I've been sitting here, years, maybe decades, so long. So, now, communities are saying, no, we, we believe in public education and we wanna support it. That's what we should be standing by. I believe that anyone that would vote no for the one mil will still vote no for a .75 mil, so I don't think that will make this any more palatable to anyone. I don't agree with that. I do think that, I, going back to the language of the auditor versus the committee, I don't know if I gave my opinion on that one way or the other. I think it is wiser for the board to say, "An independent citizen committee," even if the intention is to use an auditor, because you could still run that through the audit committee. I'm not naming the title of the committee, I'm just saying it's an independent citizen committee, instead of the word auditor. If only for the fact that, I don't know if this board is ready today to make the decision to not have the citizens financial oversight committee, but if that's what the board wants to do, then that may be a discussion for a different day. We wanna run it through an auditor and then go through the audit committee, well, that's still gonna be an independent citizen committee. So, to me, I think it would be wiser and offer more flexibility for the board if it just said an independent citizen committee, personally. If you wanna leave it as auditor, I'll have to really think about that one. I don't know if I feel like that's quite representative. I can tell that there's consensus of support for athletics, but I just wanna point out a couple more things, because I can't walk away. Number one, there was a point that was made that you have to have a certain GPA for athletics, and man, I think that's a really valid point. It's a two-point-oh. That's what you need to graduate high school. It's not a high bar, it's a C average, that's what you have to have to graduate high school. So, to say that it's on the same metrics as arts, I still don't know if that's true or not. Number two, if you go to C-Poms and look up actual standards that, that the district is responsible for, there are not ones specific to these extracurricular activities, which are these athletic programs. But there are specific standards about a lot of the fine arts programs that are being funded through this. My point is, the district is far more responsible for the fine arts standards than they are for any of the athletics. That is an extracurricular activity, it is an add-on, whereas the fine arts programs are actually embedded into our standards. If you look up, for instance, football in the standards, which I did that, just for curious, curiosity, it had a standard about offense and defense, that's a PE standard, not a football standard. There is not a specific, but if you look at painting, there are very specific multiple types of painting standards that are fine arts standards that we are required to teach in our art classes, if a student elects to take those. So, my point is, the fine arts is something that I would consider to be far more core than athletics. It is an extracurricular activity. Still, I recognize that there is consensus, I'm just gonna point those things out, because I actually think it could be a mistake and a hindrance on this ballot language. I wanted to say that we had a starting point with our past resolution. And I really like a lot of the whereas clauses in our past resolution that I believe should be included in whatever resolution we bring forward. So, I numbered all of my resolutions, all of the whereas's.
Old one.
The old one, because I think there's several that we should add. So, if you will just humor me, I have numbered them one through thirteen. There are thirteen whereas clauses.
Are you talking about the 2021?
Uh, yes, the old one.
You're just numbering like number, the first whereas is number one.
First whereas is one, the second whereas is two, the third whereas, because I think that we should add some of these in, since we're working off of this one. I think number seven, that's the one about the additional thirty minutes. I think we should add that one in. I do think that that one would still need to be, have some editing, because it also talks about, it talks about the, where it's been utilized and things like that. Oh, and that was the other one.
And it's changed from thirty-third, like it was something...
Yeah, no, there's, it would have to be updated. I just think it would be important to have it. Yes, all of these would need to be updated. I had number four marked.
Four?
Number four, is that where you're...
Yes, number four. That was another one I had marked.
You still want it, or were you questioning?
Yes. I'm trying to see if I, why I didn't star that one. No. But I, yes, I liked that one. And you might disagree with me on these. Number ten, it talks about the revenues generated, and it just talks about, it's basically a reiteration of the ballot language, but it's inside the, the resolution, and I think that that's important. Number eleven talks about the budget priorities and how the board will make sure that it's appropriate and things like that. I think that should be in there. Number twelve and number thirteen, I think, are also important, because it, it talks about the qualified electors. It talks about, number thirteen talks about the opportunity and, and we believe that it's in the best interest of our schools and our students, and I believe that should also be in there as well.
Were those the last two, before the now there four?
Yes, yeah, those are the last two.
That would have to be also added to, to four years, not three.
Yeah, no, they have to be edited. They have to be edited, I acknowledge.
I will say that some of the whereas, when Sarasota came out with theirs, and theirs is much more condensed.
Yeah.
You know, have whereas's like this, is why some of these were eliminated. But I don't, if, if the board, if we feel like we need to have some of these, I don't see any of those that, I'm like, oh, no way.
Yeah, no, I am not, I'm, I'm not, I feel like there's some that we don't need. I agree with you. But to me, this, not very many people see this resolution. They only see the ballot language. The ballot language is the most important piece, I'm not gonna say that it's not. But the whereas's, if somebody were to go and look at them, I would want them to hear that the board has said all these things.
I mean, I don't know where everyone else is at on that. I don't particularly have a, I've looked, read all the ones you just said. I don't have a particular, I mean, I'd be fine with them, having them on there. I don't think that's an issue.
And number nine is kind of already there, that's why I didn't say number nine. Number nine was kind of already in the one that's in front of us, kind of. So, is there, it sounds like there's a lot of consensus, but is there consensus for citizen committee or auditor?
So, my, my question would be to the board, and I've, obviously, we've all discussed it. And I don't, I don't disagree with you, that I don't know if we're completely ready to say that CFAC is out, in or out. I, I don't, I don't know, unless the board feels like we, we should say it. I do like, I'm fine with saying an independent citizen committee and allowing it to go through the audit committee, like we picked CRI anyways. So, hey, when that next RFP or whatever we call, comes up and it goes through the audit committee anyways, so it's still ultimately gonna be done by an auditor, but the audit committee is an independent committee that we pick and that are obviously not employees, et cetera.
I'm just gonna, I'm sorry, I was gonna say, that, that, that will add it to seventy-four words. But Mrs. DiAgostino said we actually could remove the one, like, where it says, "Continue the current one mil," we can actually remove that one in parentheses, and that would actually remove a word.
Okay.
Just saying.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm okay. I mean, unless the board feels like, I, I think that the independent citizen committee does allow you some flexibility there to, if you, if you wanna keep CFAC or not, and if you wanna add something later on, maybe down the road or whatever, I don't know what, but I think it does allow you some flexibility, instead of just saying an auditor.
But if you remove athletics, that's a one word also.
I don't think we're gonna get that one.
Go ahead. As one of five, I, I am ready to do away with the CFAC. But I'm, I agree maybe with Ms. Messenger that we could change it to a citizens, independent citizens committee, with the understanding that, well, that's just my, if we came to that discussion later, I would be an advocate for doing away with the CFOC, because I think the pros and cons. The cons outweigh the pros, as I discussed before, plus the added burden on the, on the staff. Again, I, I wanna thank anyone on the citizens financial oversight committee. I know they do good work, I know they're dedicated, they're not getting paid, they're volunteers, they're trying to make the school system a better place. It's just that I would rather see it run through the audit committee. I think that's a more appropriate place for that function, so.
My question would be, does an audit committee actually take this resolution when you're looking at funds that are spent through the mill?
Oh, yes.
Okay, I wanna make sure.
Take a look, take a look at, to give you an idea of what a report looks like, read the sales tax report.
Okay, well...
Because it's the same, same idea, you know, that there's money coming in and has to be spent according to the resolution and the ballot.
All right, I wanna make sure that. I'm looking at page eighteen of the deck for the workshop financial update. And I kinda see, all right, we're actually, if you look at Manatee at the bottom, and then you look at Sarasota just above that, so we kinda are just copying their language to add athletics and security. So, is that, was that considered when you...
I did not look at that portion, no. But I think the biggest, to me, the biggest change is it's Sarasota, like, obviously, you see that our starting salary is forty-nine, but it's really not, because we haven't added the referendum to that.
Let me say that.
But Sarasota goes in the general fund and is paid.
They're fifty-five. If I remember going back, I'd have to dig through documents. It, there, it says that, but that included their, their referendum. So, it's not fifty-five plus the one mil.
No, forty-seven point nine percent is, yeah, is, yeah, so, no, absolutely, that includes their referendum.
That includes, right.
But our number doesn't, because we don't, if it's a salary, it's a supplement.
And that, right.
They put their, they put their referendum into the general fund to put it as a salary.
Right. So, this, this chart on that page is kinda misleading. It's almost saying the fifty-five in Sarasota plus a one mil, and that's not the case. Their mil is built into their fifty-five. And then if you look at the same chart, you have Hillsborough hasn't got a millage, but Pasco says up to one mil. Pinellas is point-five. And, you know, they're not, they're, Pasco's at forty-nine and up to a mil. Pinellas is fifty-two at point-five mil. So, I don't know if that is, the supplement is sixty-three at Pasco, Pinellas sixty-three twenty-eight. So, this, this whole thing is kinda misleading, because you don't know if that millage is included into their starting salary, because I know in Sarasota, it is part of their starting salary.
Would you like for me to speak to that?
Yeah, yeah.
So, our staff went to each of these districts' websites to be able to get this particular information, and the starting salary when, that they have posted there, if you were to look, as you're mentioning Sarasota at fifty-five thousand, that does include the referendum, because if you notice over in that far column, when it says the amount that goes to the teachers, they've described, scribed it, you know, for the extension of time and that kind of information, that is part of their salary. If you were to take Manatee at the forty-nine to ten starting salary, add the sup, there's a supplement that gets added on top of it. So, the teachers here at Manatee County at fifty-seven thousand. So, where the, where the districts have given a supplement, for example, Pinellas, Pinellas had fifty-two thousand stated on their website as a starting salary. But then, in addition to that, they have a supplement, so they, they too add that sixty-three thousand to it, which would take them up to the fifty-eight. So, we specifically noted which ones were giving supplements, because that would not lend to be in the starting salary, that would be in addition to. So, that's why all the other ones that have maybe a percentage and words, those are not supplements. So, just to easily take this particular chart that was put together, take the starting salary, and if any of the columns mention supplement, add that to determine, you know, what a whole salary is. But we tried to keep it as, as transparent, but it was, I guess it's still confusing, because each of the districts will term it differently. But we were hoping that the amount to the teachers on that far right would help explain their compensation and how the referendum was working for each of those districts.
We got, we got the starred, the whereas's that we wanted to add, we got that, right? I'm just making sure. I mean, I got it on mine, if we did, yes.
Yes, we, we got it. I, I was just gonna mention, keep in mind that this slide shows districts as they currently sit. And Sarasota did just move forward. We...
To voting, anyway?
We, we are, right. I believe there's been some media coverage about Hillsborough, perhaps looking that direction and going to... Um, I believe there's been some media coverage about Hillsborough, um, perhaps looking that direction and, and going to have that discussion. And, um, uh, Pinellas has not started talking yet, but I think their discussion is forthcoming. So, uh, there'll be a number of districts that have these on the ballot this fall. And the contours of this slide could change depending on what those districts do. Um, and that's the, again, that's the whole competitive piece to this.
You got consensus.
Tweeted, and I think this is pretty much the consensus. Anybody else have any?
Mr., Mr. Chair, just a couple of clarification with the ballot language. Was there, was there consensus on professional development or professional learning or staff training with those two words there?
I don't like those words at all.
I like none of them.
I, I will, I will say, I, I will say that this, the state, sorry, this break.
I'm sorry, I just think it's, I don't like either one, none of that.
I will say that the state FDOE has officially coined the term professional learning in all of their statutes and documents, and, and you won't see the, the term development in, in their wording. Not to sway a word change there, but the, uh, to be consistent with DOE rulemaking, they have, they have changed to professional learning.
Um, so let, well, let me ask you this, the board. If it said student achievement through more instructional time and supports, what is support? Is that potential professional development? I mean, yes, because that's, yeah, I mean, that's supporting what you're do, I mean, that's.
Summer program.
Yeah, so I mean theoretically, to me, as long as you're doing something that's going to help student achievement, right? And, and we're going to support you as a teacher to help you be better to teach your student. I mean, support is kind of open to, and, and to me, that comes back to our job is to see, do we like what you're doing or not from a Dr. Weisong standpoint of, if you're allowing teachers to go to Hawaii to, you know, do something crazy, you know what I mean? Like, but I don't, I, we're not, we don't, um, that's on us to make sure that, like, hey, are we spinning this right as well, right? Like, so, you know, I mean, I feel, I think there's a, uh, just like we went on the normal budget. So, yeah.
I just want to say supports was always in there and it was always because it could mean a lot of different things to a lot of different schools and.
Be extra personnel, it could be a lot.
A lot, there's a lot of pieces to the word supports.
I would be okay with getting rid of the professional development and just say student achievement through more instructional time and supports.
Right.
I don't know.
I'm fine with that as well because I don't think it needs to be there. I agree with you. I think it, there's supports means a lot of different things. And that whatever it is that you need to do to support the students, that is the goal of it, which, like I said, like that we've done tutoring, we've done summer programs, we've done different curriculums, we've done all different types of things, different programs that were all supports. And that can be different for a high school versus an elementary school.
So let's say that, this is probably for Dr. Weisong. Well, let's say that we took the professional development, development words out and there is a conference on the latest techniques in teaching reading with phonics. Are we not going to send our people because we didn't, we didn't, it's not in the millage? I mean, we're sending people to those kind of things already, I think, are we not? And how, how would that affect that or, I'll, I'll, I'll ask that question, let you answer, then I'll ask another one.
We certainly have other fund sources that can pay for professional development. So I, I don't want this to be the, the, the sticking point. Again, more flexibility in funding sources is always good, right? In a system where so much of our money is categorized and, and, and placed in compartments. But yes, we have other funding that we can use, um, for professional development. Sometimes it is a matter of scale, um, right? So again, if we had a, a, a less restrictive, um, pot of money, we, we might do a, we could do a district-wide, um, local, y- y- you know, summer opportunity, um, that maybe there wouldn't be enough money for, you know, in another funding source. But again, we'll make it work.
And, you know, if you came to me and said, I sent, uh, three, three staff members to a conference to learn about the latest science on the teaching with, for students with dyslexia, especially in early pre-K, in the early pre-K ages, I would go, okay, well, that was, that was along with early literacy programs. You're going to find out the latest techniques so you can bring them back to the school system and use them. I, I wouldn't have a problem with that. So sure, strike professional development.
One, one more, uh, clarification, um, where it says recruit and retain teachers, staff. One suggestion could be recruitment and retention of teachers slash staff.
Tomato, tomato.
Well, grammatically it goes, as an old English teacher, it goes, because you're using verbs there. And other things are more nouns like student achievement, early literacy programs. So I agree with, as from an English teacher's standpoint, I liked using the nouns instead of the verbs. Recruitment and retention as opposed to.
Those are the verbs that we're using?
Yeah.
Yep, legal.
More grammatically balanced, as we say. But go ahead. The legal, people like to weigh in.
To save on having, having to add the article that was in, um, Mr. Chapman's suggestion, you could say recruiting and retaining teachers and staff, or teachers slash staff. Use the gerund.
So, but you still have to have the, are you saying, what, what, what would you not have to have then?
I think in Mr. Chapman's version, he added the article of recruitment and retaining and retention of, but you would.
I get it. Recruiting and retaining, sure, yeah.
Can we get rid of the slash and give, put an and there? Do we have enough words now to do that? I think we do if we get rid of professional development.
Yep, yep.
That makes me happier.
I don't.
The recruiting and retaining teachers and staff. Is that, uh, is that okay?
Can I go up to the school security and safety? To me, that's two words we don't, and safety. I mean, so school security to me is safety. So I don't know why we need, you know, four words to describe that. School security is safety to me.
There, and what do you think, Dr. Weisong? Is there a difference between school security and safety in your mind or?
There'd be school security, recruit, recruiting and retaining teachers and staff. I mean.
Safety is a broader term and allows for more flexibility as opposed to school security, which could be construed more, more narrowly.
So just get rid of the word security then.
School safety?
School safety.
Although, I mean, I don't, I don't know. So I mean, I don't know. I, I would.
If we have the words, why not keep it?
Yeah, if we've got the words, I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's that much of a difference. I mean, I just don't know how people would read. I don't know.
Does that mean fixing the sidewalk? That's safety. That's not exactly the intention of security and safety.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, and then that's physical property is capital.
Capital.
Well, repair is.
The term's usually safety and security, not security and safety as well.
Well, safety and security instead of secure, I mean, I, I think that, yeah, whatever, I mean.
In the statutes, it's usually.
I think having them, I just, I think having them both is.
Or you can just flip it, like, I like the way that sounds better.
School safety and security, yeah.
Mr. Guy just said in legal statute, it shows up as safety and security.
That's what's usually described.
I'm fine with flipping them.
I still think that, uh.
You got board.
I don't have the votes, I can tell that point seven five is a better way to go.
And you got school board, not school district.
Right.
Okay. Anything else that, you're good from that at standpoint? We got the whereas is.
We're gonna see this again before it's.
We had to, so go ahead, Dr. Weisong, tell us what the next steps are with this, yeah. Well, go ahead.
I recommend you read it all the way through it, just so we can hear it at one point.
Can I ask one more question before we do that?
Yes.
Here's my wrench. I believe that Mrs. Forman had brought this up at one point when we were talking about this, um, at one of our meetings. I don't remember. I think you talked about it. Um, but, um, is there any interest in adding mental health? I really feel like you've said that.
Yeah, I did, I did, yeah, yeah. Especially since the state.
In the piece, it says.
Playing with it.
Behavioral.
Is there an interest in that? Because then that might pay for more guidance counselors, that might pay for other resources for students that we know that students are dealing with and that the teachers are confronted with on a regular basis.
I'll trade you athletics for mental health.
Deal!
But the, my only, I don't, um.
I'm just asking. It's a real quick yes or no, just.
I do, I do think this.
That's a no.
There's some validity, there's some validity to the concept, but I don't know about saying mental health.
Right.
I think there's some validity in what you just said about, hey, counselors and things like that, but not necessarily. When you put health in there, now all of a sudden they're, they're, they're just like, there's been questions, which we've obviously proven not. But the health, the, uh, you know, doughtery, the, the, and in all of our title one, you know what I mean? Like the community partnership schools, you get into health and now all of a sudden we, well, I'm not, we wouldn't, but I'm saying that that's. So I would, so I would be, I'm not against perhaps using for that reason, because that's going to help student achievement. But supports may fall under that. So student achievement and, wait, wait, let me go back to it. So student achievement through more instruction time and supports, supports, that's where it may fall anyways, without having to say mental health.
Okay, legal opinion. Does that, if, if let's say a student was struggling behaviorally and because of their behavior issues that stem from a mental health concern, they are now, um, struggling in school. The teacher is struggling with the management of that child because that child needs additional supports. Would that fall under the supports in this current ballot language?
The statute requires the referendum language to state how the funds will be allocated. So that's why you even have the, the drill that you're going through right now. So you're supposed to be disclosing to the voter how the funds will be allocated. Subject to seventy-five words. So the, I think you got to choose your words wisely because the, you're using up valuable real estate in the referendum itself. Supports, it's a catch-all.
Is it? That's my question.
I mean, how can anybody be against support, right?
Challenge accepted, I'll find somebody. But does supports cover what I just gave an example of?
So I mean, i- if it's a significant allocation of the pie, it probably should state for mental health programs or something like that. But if it's a pretty small part of the overall pie, I think it probably could fall under supports.
Okay.
But if it's really a thing that, that a focus of the community, that, that the school system needs more, a lot more money for mental health programs, that, you know, that would be something I would argue should be in there. But if we're just talking about a, a, a small percentage, I, I think it would fall under a word like support.
Okay.
Dr. Weisong, did you have something that's?
I was just gonna say to the, and, yeah, we're getting into a lot of what, what words mean here, right? But when you talk about school safety and security, that, that includes threat assessment, right? Which is done at the student level by multidisciplinary professional teams. And if there is a need to address mental health supports for a student because of threat assessment, that is a part of school safety and security.
I just hate that it would have to get to that level before a, a child really got the help they needed. That's so unfortunate, that it has to get to that point before we go, yes, that, that, now we can give them those supports. That's sad.
Well, and, and, and again, we have other, we have other funding sources that, you know, that, that tier one universal mental health gets worked through. I, I was just saying if there was some specialized need, it, it's, in some cases, it's a subset of that school safety piece. But I also hear what you're saying.
It would be like a tier three. But that, but a tier three would fall under what he just said.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
As a suggestion of how to proceed, maybe instead of reading what Mr. Chapman has transcribed, maybe we take a short break and have it put in writing and pass, pass it out.
Then read.
Reconvene and pass it out so everybody can, because I just think it's.
Can I just say? If we start adding additional language in here for like behavioral health or whatever. Well, you're, I think you're gonna, you're, you're on a slippery slope of the intent of this millage is to retain teachers and, uh, recruit and retain teachers. That was the whole intent of this. So if we keep adding addition, I mean, we're already adding another two layers to this. Pay it out of the millage, just, we can pay it out of the millage. And here we are with, uh, school safety and security. I flipped those words because that's, I think, what we decided on. Uh, early literacy programs, pre-kindergarten, all of those, uh, words. And then we're adding athletics in there too. If you keep adding in here, you're going to disenfranchise voters, in my opinion. I think that we have a pretty robust behavioral health program here. And we do get a lot of funding through the state and through grants for that. I just think adding it onto this would be.
I don't think we are.
Yeah. First, I only brought it up because Mrs. Forman had brought it up and I wanted to make sure it was discussed and all I did was ask everyone's opinion. Second of all, I believe the purpose of this millage is not necessarily to recruit and retain, retain teachers, but actually to support our public schools the very best way possible, which would include recruiting and retaining teachers, but also all these other things listed.
Yeah, I don't think this, at this point, this millage is not just about, this is about needing sixty-nine million dollars because we don't get it from the state.
The children and their education.
How much time do you need to, to do, to retype that?
Uh, fi- five, five, ten minutes.
Okay, so twelve-thirty, so it's.
Wait, adding the whereas is?
No.
No?
No, just the ballot language.
Okay.
Just the ballot language. All right, twelve-thirty, you got eight minutes. Go. Just the ballot language. All right, twelve-thirty, you got eight minutes. Go! On air, all right. So welcome back, we've got the edited, we just were waiting on to get it on the screen above. So if you want to go ahead and scroll down to the actual ballot language, because we haven't edited this full document of bringing the whereas's over, changing the top portion. So we just want to look at the, the ballot language. Board, I know we've had it as we were sitting here with it. I don't, I didn't see any changes or any, anything that we weren't, didn't already pretty much have a consensus over. Anything just on the ballot language? You guys see anything you want to change?
Chair, we had a couple of questions. Totally optional. We don't think you have to have the numeral one after one.
Okay.
Mill, which frees up a word. And then we, what were we at, seventy-two to begin with?
We're at seventy-two words right now.
Seventy-two. And then, so that allows, we could, where it says visual slash performing arts, you could put visual and performing arts. Get rid of one more slash.
I'm just going to say seventy-two is my lucky number, so maybe we should stick at that.
Oh, it'll, it'll...
Use a random number to be lucky on. But that's awesome.
We stay at seventy...
No, it really is, I'm not kidding, it's really is my lucky number.
By striking the numeral one and adding the word and, you're still at seventy-two words.
That feels good.
If, if we're wanting to get rid of slashes, that's fine. Devin, did you get that, Mr. Chapman? Getting rid of the one, number one in numer...
Yeah, I mean, it's...
Parentheses.
It, it, it could, it could potentially read as one ad valoria millage, not an ad valoria millage of one. The, it, it's for voters to see that the, the, the ad valoria millage we're levying is one.
The number one.
And that, that's, I remember that debate from last time. Now, I'm not, I'm just throwing that out there as, as, um, as, as, why, why last time that was in there, but...
I think it does show something visually, I, I don't particularly care if it's...
But that's up to you.
I think it does show something visually, like it's a number one. But I don't, so if we want to change this slash and say visual and performing arts, that changes from seventy-two, so I can see that. Precocious.
Well, alternative, you leave the number one.
This fails, it's your fault.
Get rid of the word one.
Yeah, you could leave the number one and get rid of the word one.
I regret telling you about my, my number.
So Sarasota's leaves the, the numeral one and does not have the word one. And, uh, and of course, Pinellas has the opposite, but...
Okay, so are you guys okay with getting rid of the word one, leaving one, the actual number one, and then adding and performing arts? We're good there? I don't hear anyone saying no?
Very small.
I'm not in support of the one, I'm not in support of the one.
I didn't say it, so.
Oh, I know you're not supportive of the one, yeah.
I don't have a voice in that.
What's your, what was your other?
Just very small, I think there should be a comma after twenty-twenty-five.
I don't know. If it's there, it's not, I don't know.
No, you're right.
That's what I...
Sure, put the comma, sure.
I would just have waited for the little blue or green squiggly to right-click and, and see what I need to edit. Is there an extra space there, or something, I don't know. So I'm good with that, I mean... All right. So Board, are we good with the language of this? It seems to me, I mean, unless, it is up to you all, seems to me like there's a consensus on the whereas we wanted to add, the language that's in here, and, and to me, as long as, obviously, we make the changes needed throughout this, the, the up to's gone and some things are gone, uh, the whereas's are brought over that we talked about. I think this is a clean document to move forward. I mean, obviously, the whereas's need to be fixed on the, the current data and stuff like that. Uh, but I think this is a, this is done and ready to roll. Okay?
So that, just for confirmation, it will be on the March nineteenth meeting for us to vote on it?
Correct. That's the, that's, and then, once we vote on it, obviously, it goes to the county commission, and then they approve to say yes, put it on the ballot. So, um, so with that, I know, Mr. Tatum, you had something to say, so go ahead.
I just want to make a few more comments overall on our, on our discussion today, if I could. I, like Ms. Spray, would really, I think we all would to some degree, like to not have the salaries somehow be part of this referendum, because, as I said, paying the reoccurring expenses with non-recurring funds is, is not optimal. But because we can only discuss it in this forum, we really haven't had any, as Ms. Spray said, we haven't had any discussions on this, but that's because we can only do it in this forum. I personally have had discussions with Ms., the previous superintendent, the current superintendent, Ms. Sellers here, about how can we make this happen? And you made the point, Mr. Chode, is that the math just doesn't work. I mean, we could get three of us or four of us to look at Dr. Weisong and say, go do this, and, and he's not a magician. Now, they, you know, some people in the community might say, well, they're just hiding money, or they're, they're not being, they're not really putting an effort into it, they're just giving you that feedback. I'm mad, that, I don't know, I'm not an expert in the one-point plan for a billion-dollar budget that I have, but I believe that these people, in talking to them, are being truthful and honest, and that the math just doesn't work. I mean, it would be like someone, you know, coming to me on my personal budget and saying, you have to take out ten percent of your budget, but still, still pay the current mortgage that you have on that. Maybe I could do that, and maybe I could... And, maybe I could do that, and maybe I couldn't. But if I looked at the math and it didn't work, then I'd have to sell, I'd have to sell my house, I'd have to downsize, I'd have to sell my car, get a low, whatever it is, you know? So, if the math doesn't work, it, it doesn't work, and that's why I'm at, you know, I'm not asking for any more, but I'm not asking for any less. This is really what we need to provide that high-quality constitutional requirement. At least, that's how I, how I see it. I'd like to go to slide number thirteen on the presentation, please. I think this is an important topic to look at real quick, especially for people, citizens who, who like to look at this kind of type of thing. And there are some out there that do. So, I'd like to point out something out here, and then I'll get maybe Dr. Weisong's opinion on, on things. So, if you look at slide number thirteen, and maybe we could put that up on the screen. That'd be possible. There we go. So, one, one concern that, that people who are looking at the fiscal responsibility of the district might say is, well, look, you, you've got your, your policy is your eight-point-five contingency there on the left. You've kind of said your min is five, and the state requirement is three. And so, here you are, last fiscal year, you're at thirteen-point-five-eight percent. And this year, you're projecting to be at eleven percent. So, it seems like you're far above what your minimum, you know, fund balance that you want to have at the end of the fiscal year. Seems like you've got a lot of money there. Why are you asking us for this, for this money? And my understanding, after having the discussions with Ms. Sellers and Dr. Weisong, and I'll let them comment on this, is also, if you look at that blue line on the right there, it's, it's coming down because the, the increase, especially from like, if you start looking at twenty-twenty-one, twenty-one-twenty-two, twenty-two-twenty-three, twenty-three-twenty-four, that's one, two, three, four fiscal years, and that was, those were essentially the COVID years, right? Where we got all this ESER money that came into the district. And you can see now that, as we're winding ourselves out of that, and then it will be gone on, in September of this year, that fund balance line is now decreasing rapidly. Reserve fund balance is what I'm, the term I guess I should be using. So, Dr. Weisong, do you see that, that trend continuing? That, that, that's, that line going like that? And I'll go ahead, I'll let you respond to that, please.
Thank you, Mr. Tatum. Yes, so, again, as the, as this nearly twenty-year history shows, you have an increase in the fund balance that corresponds with the federal pandemic relief funding. And each district approached that funding differently. But in this district, there were not only additional supports for students, but there was also a shifting of some of the routine costs of doing business over to that federal funding, which meant that your rainy day fund got a little bit larger. But now that that funding is ending, we don't have that funding source anymore. And so, those expenditures that need to continue shift back into the general fund, which means that total expenditure will be higher. And so, yes, you would see that blue line continue to decline. The eleven-point-zero-nine is the projected fund balance on June thirtieth of twenty-four. So, that's a projection. It could come in lower, it could come in higher. The team is working on a budget now, and there are, as you all know, many variables, including what does the Florida Education Finance Program look like? And the legislature is still in session, so all we have is drafts, but we're working through all of that now. But I am anticipating bringing the board a draft budget later this spring, early summer, that puts the projected fun, and fund balance at June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-five, somewhere between that five percent strategic reserve and that eight-and-a-half percent contingency number, right? So, we're just trying to get a smooth glide path. And from there, because the federal pandemic funding ends September thirtieth of, of twenty-four, from there, the challenge is to keep expenditures level with budget or revenue changes. Because anything, because remember that the, and, and the board just updated this policy. We can never go below the three percent state requirement. That's a lockbox. That's in statute. The five percent strategic reserve is, is truly the emergency savings. And then, the contingency is a little bit of a rainy day fund for things like if enrollment comes in lower in August, and we get less funding next January than we were counting on, then I'm not coming and saying, board, I need that emergency fund. All I'm saying is, board, we made an adjustment within our, within that, with our, within our contingency. But yes, the goal is that that blue line will continue to come down and then hopefully flatten out as we manage the resources that we have.
So, I think I heard you say that the budget that you will bring to us here coming up for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five, you're shooting for a reserve fund balance between the policy of the board to have a minimum of five percent, and a desire to have a contingency at eight-point-five percent. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
And that is, I, may I assume that that is based on having the one-mill revenue available? Is that what that's based on?
That, that's correct.
So, what would, what, it's hard to estimate, but if we didn't have that one-mill, what, where would that, where would that reserve fund balance end up at? Do you, do you think?
So, of course, for the twenty-four-twenty-five school year, we're, we're, we're locked into the current millage, right? And the current allocation of funding. So, we'll have presumably a vote in November. If the referendum doesn't pass, then this team goes to work immediately on that twenty-five-twenty-six budget. And we go through the scenario we talked about earlier, which is, how do we scale down what is right now about seventy million dollars in funding? The answer will not be, oh, we have this fund balance, because that seventy million is recurring, right? It's annual, and the fund balance is one-time dollars, right? So, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to absorb a seventy-million-dollar hit, right? Because you, we'd be out of money in two years.
And that, that line there reminds me to some degree of the healthcare fund line, which we got ourselves into trouble by not maintaining a certain amount of revenue and increasing it. When I say increasing, at least keeping up with inflation over, periodically over time. And again, I go to my point that this is an environment where we need to at least maintain what we have right now to keep our line from getting out of hand like it did to the, with the healthcare fund, where then we actually had to go back and ask for a large increase in healthcare premiums to, to kind of stabilize that line and make that healthcare line level, so it didn't look like that. So, I, I just wanted, I wanted to bring this to people's attention, and they might say, well, gee, you got, you're way above your desired reserve percentage fund balance. Why can't you just use that money? And that was a good discussion. And one of the main points too is, well, that's, that money will not be reoccurring. It's there now, but when the ESER money goes away, and we have to take those expenses, required expenses that we were doing with ESER, and now put them back in the general fund, that will cause this reserve fund at the end, end of the year to go down. And it will be down in the range where we want it, and then that will level out. But if we didn't have the millage money, that would really put us in a fix, right? As far as trying to meet the goals of the desired revenue percentage fund balance.
Right, and, and again, we, as a, as a leadership team, we, we would, we would be responsible and still bring you a twenty-five-twenty-six budget proposal that keeps us above the three percent state requirement, but it's what will no longer be part of the school district. Both human resources and programming that will be the delta, right? It, it'll be an acknowledgement of these, this is all the stuff that's going away that helps kids, that we're just not going to be able to do anymore. And, and, and if I came and said, we have to do all of this, it would be deficit spending, right? It would, you would, you would erode the fund balance to the point where we would be, end up back under three percent and in a, in, in a true emergency, which we obviously cannot do.
Yeah, I do, right. Again, I think my analogy to some degree of, you know, if I had to pay, you have to keep paying all your bills at home, Mr. Tatum, but you're going to get a lot less revenue. I might, I'd have to say, well, I, I have to lower my bills. I have to get a smaller mortgage and sell my car and buy a less expensive one. And we can do that, but is that what the, you know, what, what we want to do? One point that just came to my mind too is, we did make some effort to try and take some employee expenses out of the general fund and out of the, and out of the millage, because we are paying bus drivers now out of capital funds. Is that, is that correct? And that was to the tune of about four-and-a-half million dollars or some, what was that, Mr. Renaldi?
Four, four million.
We have some, four million.
Okay.
So, that's not all of the bus drivers, but it's, it's, it was a portion, right?
So, we, we have made some efforts to try and do that, what we can.
And, and remember, when I had spoken at the beginning of the budget season, that the reason why we're seeing the decline is, we did move some of the positions, start, have in general, start picking up those counselors, the middle school and the high school. So, we did move, shifted some of that back, which is why we're seeing the decline starting now, going down to the eleven percent, because we did start to pick some of those up, so we didn't have all of it occur in twenty-four-twenty-five.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. And then, just one more comment on the, I, I agree with the change about making the wording be an independent, it's over here now, we changed it. With oversight by an independent citizen committee to ensure proper use of funds, that kind of gives us some flexibility. I did want to make, I do want to make the point that before the break, I said that, that people that were on the CFOC actually were advocating against the millage, which is fine. It's their constitutional right, which is perfectly fine. I just think it would be more unbiased if we had, if we had something where it wasn't like that, where it was really people who were unbiased professional auditors, who just kind of were looking at it from a professional standpoint and said, looked at the language and said, you're doing it or you're not doing it. Because people certainly have the First Amendment right to do that. But if you have people that obviously are out there advocating for or against a political issue, and then you put them on a committee to monitor that issue, you're going to have, you're going to have politics involved in something that hopefully we would just, we would like to keep unbiased and have it done by professionals who really don't have, although I guess they pay taxes too in the county, but in theory, don't have a, a dog in the fight supposedly, so to speak. They're just professionals who are taking an unbiased look at it based on their professional experience and their professional qualifications. And those are the only comments I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Anything else from anyone else?
As far as the members on the CFOT committee advocating or not for the millage, you said that don't have a dog in the fight. I think that's kind of demeaning in a way, because people on that committee, some people do not have students in the system. Some do have students in the system. You have employees, actually, that serve on that committee as well. So, to me, that's kind of a little demeaning to that committee.
That's my point though, is to get them out of that, so that they don't have-
Well, who, Richard, who are you, excuse me, Mr. Tatum, who are you going to get to serve on that committee that doesn't have an opinion one way or another?
Well, that's why-
It's good, that would be difficult. That would be very difficult. You would have to have somebody out of county to serve on that.
Well, that's why Mrs. Forman was saying, is we would run this through the audit committee and have it done by professional auditors, so that it says citizens with an over, independent citizen committee, which is the audit committee, who are basically selected for their professional qualifications. But then, they would actually hire professional auditors to go and do this for us, so that we don't have people that are actually on the committee who have a financial interest or a political interest in what the conclusions of that committee are. Because there are people on that committee that have financial interests as well as strong political views on what the outcome or the conclusions of that committee are. And that's what I'm trying to avoid, is the appearance of, of, of influence, because they have quote-unquote dogs in the fight. Whereas if you take people off that committee who are either financially, who have financial incentives or political incentives on that committee, then the, those conflicts of interest, you might say, go away. If you do it through the-
I sit on, as a liaison to that committee, and the makeup of that committee is who we approved and voted on. So, it's kind of, okay. We not, shouldn't have those members on the committee because they got political interests or they're advocating for or against it. I think ever, you sat up here and made good points about how you're for this, this funding, okay? I've made a, tried to be pretty flat. I'm not against, I'm not for, I'm about the dollar, the percentage. That's where I'm at with it. And that's where I'm going to stay all the way through this, okay? Because I see that individuals who struggle, they go through the grocery store, and they see what once used to be a luxury is no longer. You know, it's not the Fruit Loops, it's the generic. It's not the hamburger that's in the package, the package in the roll. I see families struggling. And because of the current political climate that we didn't create, it's out there across the country. Everything that you walk, every aisle you walk through, things are so much more. And I think we can still fulfill what we need to do as a district with a portion of the mill and also help our citizens. I don't see its allocation. If we allocate this much to, you know, the principals where the turnover rate, I, I, I asked HR, how many principals have left because of pay in the, since twenty-eighteen? One, one. And was it because of pay? I don't know. It was probably, I mean, everybody wants to do the headhunting. But not a lot of people leave Manatee County as a senior figure in our district. They just don't. Teachers, I think there was a three or four hundred teachers that have left the district. And again, I go back to this initial intent, retain and recruit teachers, because that's where all of this started back then. So, I see that individual that is struggling, and those who are even renting, and the landlords are price gouging them to death, and they can't afford. You know, that landlord is charging a greater amount of rent because of the taxes. They have to pay on their property, not only through the district, but through the county and whatever revenue that they come out with. So, that's what I see, the struggling taxpayer out there. You know, I'm comfortable in my life where I'm at, you are too, but there are many in our county that are not. And then, you go to the growth, you know? And, and we can project all of this stuff in a five-year plan and all of those kind of things, but we can't project what a point-seven-five would be with all the growth that we're having. I find that a little impossible. I, I, I just think that's ridiculous, in my, my opinion. I think that we can't project what it would be. And I know Mr. Choade said something about, oh, it'd be, we would go down to fifty-eight, fifty-eight million from sixty-nine. Well, we're-
Fifty-two, actually.
Okay, fifty-two, thank you. I just think that the growth and the revenue that we're getting from the growth is more- is more than ample to run our district, um, the way we want to run it, and, and provide all of the services that we have for our students. And, and, trust me, I get stuff all the time. "Well, your reading rate hasn't improved much since you got the millage." Well, I'm saying, "Well, that's a slow process, you don't realize how, how hard that really is." And I explain that to people, because they want to see results as fast as I do, to be honest with you. Uh, but they can't come fasting up for anyone. It's just, it's a, it's a slow process. I think that I'm looking out for not only the district, but I'm also looking out for the taxpayer in general. Because when those people were coming up here and pleading about their tax bills, I started looking up addresses, and, uh, tax bills are just out the, out the roof. If that falls, then maybe, but I don't see that. I see everything just keep going up, everything. So, if anything that we could do to, you know, keep the status quo, basically.
I just want to remind
Maintain.
People that we did not raise taxes. Like this is keeping the 1 mil.
Oh, I understand that, I understand that.
We're not, what's raised is your property value.
Right.
Because we live in a beautiful place.
Right.
We live in a beautiful place, because we have beautiful schools, beautiful teachers, and we're doing a great job in the district, because if we didn't, nobody would want to live here. So we didn't raise, in our, in our general, our, our, uh, local effort has decreased, we, we know that. So, I just want to make sure we're not, we're not raising anything, this is a continuation of one that's been there for four or five years now. So, um, it's the values of your home, because we live in a great place. Yes, ma'am?
Um, I'd like to point out a couple, you know, um, like I said, Ms. Spray, I was where you are right now. And, um, you know, and I beg you to, uh, to get answers, specific answers, and, and an understanding of money coming in, what it would be if we gave up a quarter of a mil, and, uh, what it would do to the budget. All we have to do, all you have to do is take a look at the last year, and take, take.
I have to doubt it.
Yeah, okay.
I haven't.
But, um, one of the, one of the problems, you know, people are, are, people are struggling, they really are. And, you know, and most people I know, it's the property insurance, not the, not the property taxes, you know? That's, that's just gone through the roof. But, um, but we have people who work for this district that are struggling too. Because, and, and I know it for a fact that we've had offers out to teachers, and then when they look at moving here, they go, I, you know, they can't find a place that they can afford. And, um, so that's a problem when our teachers can't afford to live here. And, um, you know, and so then you start looking at our bus drivers and our maintenance people, and the people with the lower income producing jobs. Uh, they're struggling too. And, um, we have, it's incumbent on us to, to pay a market wage to, to keep those people, and to, uh, and to have the, the best people that we can, the best teachers that we can for the district. So, um, I just ask that you take a look, you know, and, and consider, maybe consider, consider the other side. Because sometimes we get an idea in our heads, and I know I had it. And, um, but the facts don't back it up. So, please, just get the facts. Thanks.
Think we're all good?
Yeah, that's probably good.
Alright, um, well, it's Friday, have a good weekend, and I don't think we have anything until the 19th.
Really?
Am I correct? I know, I know this week was three, three out of the five, five days.
Board briefings.
Yeah, we have board briefing.
Got to come back for that.
Yeah, um, I'm sick of y'all, so enjoy.